Okay, so Section 15, councillors. We start with page 15.1 in the big folder. And Bernie, and the blue graphs is something we're doing. Righto, councillors, we start with Museums, Library and Art Gallery, page 15.1. Page 15.1 really just gives a high level overview of some of the community outcomes envisaged for arts and culture. Questions, councillors, councillor McTash?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Bernie, in relation to the services that are offered about with bookbinding services and that kind of thing, is there a possibility of making that more of a revenue stream for council? So, I mean, I guess there's a bunch of that that's done internally for internal purposes, and in the cost section, the fee charges at the back, there are nominal prices for, I guess, members of the public who wish to have those things done, or have you removed that service altogether, because I note that they don't, most of them don't exist this year?
Through the chair, what we have found over the last, I could say, five years, really, after trying a range of strategies to build the revenue of the library bindery, was that essentially all the strategies we tried didn't deliver the fruit of increased revenue. We tried promoting it within council, we promoted it externally, we enhanced the website presence, and we adopted a range of strategies to try and build up the revenue from the library bindery, which essentially is relatively small in the scheme of things. I think a number of years ago, we were earning in excess of $20,000 in revenue from external bindery work. I think in the last couple of years, we've struggled to get $5,000 or $6,000, and the reasons for that are several. One is that it is a specialist craft, it's not cheap, and the quality levels were consistent with what one would expect a quality bookbinding service to provide. But what's happening is, I think, is that council is fully aware that technology is sort of, I guess, sidestepping the need for physical items in many cases, and people are not taking the time or the effort or the spending the money to have as many things bound as has been in the past. So essentially, I don't believe that there's a market to improve the revenue there. And in addition to that, in that context, when the library reviewed its staffing in the last year, during 2014, we actually significantly reduced the bindery staff available in the staff structure, in the expectation that that trend would continue. So we actually have fewer staff now who are able to do that work, but it was a declining revenue stream anyway.
So your proposal in the 15th year is not to provide any public binding services?
That's correct. We have a number of existing customers, and we'll continue to do the work and generate some revenue while they continue to provide that stock to us. But what we made the decision is that we won't go out and try and seek revenue, because we tried that for quite a few years unsuccessfully, and that we'll just focus on internal work.
Are the other bookbinders in Dunedin that will be able to provide that service to residents, or is it leaving a gap?
I don't believe it's leaving a gap. The university has a bindery, essentially, they focus substantially on internal work, thesis binding, et cetera. I don't believe they generate much, if at all, from external work. I'm aware of one commercial bookbinder in Dunedin, and there's one in Almarue, but essentially it's a craftsman approach, and potentially those operators can potentially meet the demand that's out there.
Further questions, councillor Pete?
Bernie, I should probably know this, but in terms of the central library refurbishment line, and that's spread over two years now, has that also been a pushback in terms of the timeline?
Well, to spread it over the two years does extend the life of that project by an additional year. The quantum of funds proposed for that refurbishment is the same, but it's to spread over two years.
Okay. And just remind us what the $3.8 million over two years is going to pay for?
Sorry, could I have a quick...
Just remind us what the $3.8 million over two years will pay for?
Essentially, the city library was occupied in 1980, and it's had no major refurbishment since that time. We have done minor refurbishment in some areas, we've dressed up the ground floor, we've modified and upgraded the children's area with assistance from City Property. Two of the four public toilets have been upgraded, the other two are still in a pretty poor state, and the carpet is wearing threadbare throughout the building. In fact, we've sort of almost got a patchwork quilt in some areas where we're patching with a colour that is different from the existing one, which is no longer available. So essentially, the $3.8 million would be to refurbish the interiors, make sure that everything was up to a sort of current disability standards, improve open-up areas, improve access. We would hope to just modify the existing space that we've got to better meet current purposes, because when the current city library was designed, it was actually before the personal computer was invented, so it wasn't really, it wasn't designed with computers in mind.
Thank you. And there's four years to run before any expenditure, and I'm just wondering if we can wait four years for some part of the refurbishment programme?
Through the chair, that is a fair point, and we would be obviously working very closely with City Property. The lifts that are in the library are the same vintage as those in the civic centre, and they are requiring increasing maintenance, and we would fit in with the City Property programmes to replace those lifts, and hopefully it can be aligned. But any major expenditure like that, we would want to try and just work in with existing City Property programmes. But if we have a goal to work to, then we can do planning, and I draw council's attention to the $150,000 that's in the capital programme for 1617 is proposed for planning for the South Dunedin complex as well as the city library. So we would do some spatial planning for the city library in that 1617 year, develop concepts of what the refurbishment would include, and then get some preliminary costing, which of course would have to be reconfirmed prior to the commencement of the project. But that $150,000 is for planning for both projects, so are they, were they to proceed?
Councillor Thompson?
Bernie, you've had the patience of Joe over many years, probably going to try it further, but I'm kind of concerned that we would have a projected capital cost in our annual plan to do something, but an operational cost that assumes we haven't done it. And we've got an operational cost in there, an additional operational cost of doing the South Dunedin library of $260,000, but an estimated operational cost of actually doing it of almost $1 million a year. And I'm wondering, I'm concerned that our focus is all the time around the cost of debt, but the additional operating cost of doing this is the equivalent of borrowing another $10 million a year. And I, so, well, my question is, why are we getting an operational plan that shows the capital cost assumption of doing something, but not the actual operational cost assumption of doing it?
Through the chair, I can provide a bit of context, so that council may remember at last year's annual plan meeting, there was discussion around the shopfront proposal for a South Dunedin complex, and as that discussion unfolded, I think the chief executive advised council that we did actually at one point have an operating cost for a South Dunedin complex, but we actually took that out as a trade-off for some staff reductions related to RFID. And what, the report that you have in front of you to do with the South Dunedin complex, the business investment proposal developed by City Property came after the development, after the inclusion, if you like, of, if you like, a placeholder operational cost in the years, in the forward years. So what we've got the benefit of now is a sort of a well, sort of a more thoroughly researched proposal for a South Dunedin complex, and some actual figures on the lease cost of, what that, commercial lease cost of what that would be, as well as all the other costs. So we're now in a better position, I think, to have a handle on those operating costs, which we didn't before we actually had that proposal.
Well, I suppose my question's probably better addressed to grant really then. In terms of the draft annual plan, would it be your intention to issue a draft annual plan that has the capital cost assumption in it, but not the operational cost assumption? Because essentially, the capital cost assumption is probably adding another, I'm guessing, three quarters of a percent to rates purely from the additional operational costs.
So my expectation would be that would be updating it, and you'd be putting those budgeted operating costs out in those years. You've got to have the operating and your capital cost lining up, I agree entirely.
Yes, so as long as we all understand that we have a set of accounts here at the moment that don't have $1 million worth of expenditure in them, well, don't have three quarters of $1 million worth of expenditure in them from the, what, can't remember, 17, 18 years?
So effectively, what happens when the timeline has occurred is that the library's done its budget, at the same time it was still working on the South Dunedin concept, so to its draft budget, which had the lower operating cost, and then the project came through in December, so.
Councillor Calvert?
Has any work been done on the effect of having a complex in the South Dunedin on the town library?
Through the chair, no, we haven't tried to model the impact, if you like, of having a South Dunedin library and community complex in South Dunedin. Our expectation is that it will draw a proportion of people who are currently using the city library, so that when we, in terms of the refurbishment, we would have to take that into account. But what we are expecting is that there would be a significant proportion of new usage, based on, I suppose, earlier consultation and earlier work that's been done on the proposal for a South Dunedin library. We expect that a significant proportion, i.e. more than half of the usage, would be a new usage, so it would actually be an increase to service levels, so library services across the city. And it wouldn't just be used by the local residents of St Kilda, South Dunedin, we would expect that people using any of the shopping facilities in South Dunedin or on Enstone Bay Road would avail themselves of the library in that area. So we expect to generate new usage if a facility is established there.
So that's sort of a gift, but not something that's been modelled?
We haven't done any systematic modelling, I'm not quite sure how I'd go about that, but we certainly could look into that if that was council's wish.
Could I just make one further comment? I think the South Dunedin complex, we have to think of it not just as a library as well, I know it talks about it in the report, but I think that the library component of that could be relatively small. There could be a lot of things you could offer out of that community complex, it would be a lot more than a library, which, you know, it's hard to model, as Bernie said, even at this stage, what the impact would be on the central library here. But I'm picking that it'd be relatively minor. I think the sort of things you can offer out of a new complex like this could be something very, very different than what we've experienced up to date. And the report does talk about some of the things we could do in terms of providing a space for 3D printing, a lot more creative spaces. So it could be very different, so it's very difficult to compare the apples and oranges in that scenario.
Thinking of the question councillor McTavish asked about the Mozgill Facility Pool Complex, whatever it's described as, that if it became a destination, it may be against our general spatial planning approach. What you're talking about is something that is viewed sort of as a destination, from what you're saying, that it has a library component, but it is a destination. Would it suck people away from a central city, and would it have an impact on transport at all? Have we looked at that, as to whether we're likely to change the usage of public transport, or people bringing their cars in and out of the central?
We're very early in the stages, I suppose, of planning. All we're putting out here is a few suggestions of what it could be. I mean, given that the footprint that we're sort of talking about with the Woffenden Russell Building is quite small, I wouldn't see it as a hu, it's not like a, I don't think it's equivalent to a sort of four-pool complex in Mozgill. It's something which is different, it's a different library model, but I wouldn't necessarily see it as a huge, we're not talking about developing something like the size of the city library in South Dunedin, it's a very different approach. But again, I'll go back to the point I made earlier, we're in the very early stages of planning, we haven't really defined anything at this stage. I suppose the point I was making was, we're not just talking about a library here, it can be something very, very different, but I don't think we're talking about a huge, flashy, glitzy, multi-storey building. It's going to be a small footprint, but it will have multiple services offered from it.
So a complex, but not a destination?
I would say so, yes.
Through the chair, if I could just add one further point to councillor Calvert's question. The, one of the other impacts that we do know, or we do expect to happen from a South Dunedin complex, is that we'll need to look at our book-bus service, and we've already flagged that up, and we would also need to look at the existing grant that we provide, small in the scheme of things it may be, but to the St Kilda Community Library, there are all things that would need to be considered.
Councillor Wadle?
Thank you. What are the transfer libraries going forward in the next 10 years? And you've touched on how the South Dunedin version has changed, but what are some of the other trends?
Through the chair, I think that the libraries that are being built nowadays are very much community centres, they provide a broad range of facilities, they're not row upon row of book stacks, they provide comfortable seating, they provide public toilets, community meeting rooms, some of them even have cafes adjoined to the building, and they're just a community hub would probably be the best description of libraries. In terms of their content, they'll still, I would expect, over the next decade or longer, have still considerable print resources, but with more electronic content available, there'd be facilities for people to access wifi, use computers, access digital content. That's all part of what libraries are going forward.
So how would you see the public library changing here?
Along the similar lines, and we're already doing that, we've launched ebook collections, we've got downloadable audio, downloadable magazines, digital content. Probably the only thing that we haven't done yet to any significant extent is digitising some of our own content in our heritage collections, and making available digitised community content, that is photos, letters, diaries, books, et cetera, from within the community. So that's probably the only area we haven't touched on, that isn't part of, I suppose, a future for libraries that I would see.
Okay. And progressing that one step further, what do you think the impact of GigaTown will have on the library, or libraries?
Well, I'm hoping, expecting that it will have really positive content, because already we, all of our libraries have computers for public access to digital content, already we have wifi in all of our libraries, and it's very heavily used. I would hope and expect that GigaTown would just complement and enhance that direction, and that we would in the future be able to provide more access to more content in different forms, and tap in and tie in with other initiatives throughout the city, the homework centres, the, and so forth, computers in homes.
Okay, regards to South Dunedin, is there any reason why we're still talking about the Woffenden Russell Building, when there potentially could be other buildings? Like, I see the old National Bank is, it's not a dead bank, one of the bank buildings is still vacant, and again, not knowing what, City Property have also looked out on that area?
Through the chair, I think the reason that we've used the Woffenden Russell Building is that it was and it is in the right area, based on previous community consultation, the community were telling us that their preference was for the CBD area of South Dunedin, King Edward Street, so it was in the right area, it was approximately the right size, and that it also had adjacent car parking. So it sort of ticked a number of boxes, but in terms of the report, it's quite clear that it's certainly no decision has been made on the location, it was just used as a model, as a concept, if you like, and if that building were no longer available, or we would have to go through a process to look at potentially the, you know, the available sites, and then make a decision on, you know, subject to council's agreement, on where it should be. But it was just used essentially because it was there, and it was in the right place and of the right size, but it is, a range of other locations could equally be possible.
Councillor Noon?
Thank you, Worship. With regards to community museums, and there's one at Middlemarch, Outtram, Waikiki and Port Chalmers being the Maritime Museum, does your budget allow any support for those museums by way of operational costs or any capital costs at all over the 10? And while I'm asking the question in particular reference to the 10-year plan, and wanting to understand whether there is any consideration during that 10-year period for the support of those community museums?
Through the chair, there was a report that, I don't believe council has actually considered yet for this, for the annual plan process, on grants for community facilities, and at the back of that report, based on figures that were provided to me, there's a figure of about $10,000 a year that's actually in the Toito museums budget, not in the library's budget, for, as a grant for the operation of those museums. How that is broken up, I'm not exactly sure myself, because in previous years, there was roughly $5,000 each provided to each of those museums, the one at Port Chalmers and the one at Middlemarch, but in 1213 and 1314, both those years, there was $10,000 that was just for both of them, so I'm not sure how that's divvied out. In addition to that, I'm aware that the curators from Toito do provide onsite support, and they do liaise with the staff at the Middlemarch and the Port Chalmers Museum. So there's a capital, well, there's a grant funding, and there's also collegial professional support through the staff as well.
So Bernie, can you just reassure council that at some stage we will see that grants for community facilities, which is targeting the community museums? Because I assume this is all under your umbrella, correct?
Through the chair, certainly it's part of the Arts and Culture Group, but my understanding is that that funding, and perhaps the financial analysts or grant may be able to confirm, but that funding is, I believe, in the current LTP, the $10,000...
Can I just clarify, you're referring to the report that we have on 18.6.1, which is grants for community facilities, so we do have it, that's in here, so.
So it's somewhere in that number? Because does that report actually itemise the grants that you've referred to? Sorry, I didn't realise it was A) already in here, and B) I haven't seen a number associated, for example, to the Middlemarch museum?
Through the chair, in the preparation of this report, that is 18.6.1, it's titled 'Grants for Community Facilities', I've requested that information from the financial analyst, and that was provided and tabulated at the back of that report, and just lists the funding for the community museums, as well as the community libraries.
So councillor Thompson?
Well, it's just a further follow-up to my earlier question, I'm actually a bit concerned that this is about as muddled as the Cricket Association might be earlier, because, I mean, I just want to make sure this is, as to what's going to end up in the draft annual plan that goes out for consultation, because at the moment, what we've got is a proposal in front of us in 18, and I understand we haven't approved that yet, so I quite understand why it is the way it is. But if we did approve that, then the $2.5 million worth of loan, of borrowing from loans that shows in the library's activity budget for 1718 and 1819 would come out, as would the associated debt repayment costs, because in fact, City Property would be effectively borrowing the money, and I'm not quite sure frankly which part of City Property that shows in, or whether they would have to raise loans to do it or what, I don't know. But there's a rental being paid back to them, which offsets those costs, so we've got this really messy picture where we're looking at a set of financials that has a completely different set of assumptions to the paper that we're going to debate under 18.
Well, I just, I wonder, yeah, I wonder, Worship, as I understand it, the draft financials are basically just carried over from the last LTP.
Yeah, so I understand why it is the way it is, but I'm worried that there's such significant assumptions that if we don't read clear that how one impacts on the other, we won't understand.
So I guess my preference would be that we discussed that in relation to the paper, and I know that there are various reasons why there have been questions on that paper now, but there have been questions on the grants paper, and there have been questions on the library paper, and they have clear, and as councillor Thompson's pointed out, significant impacts on the actual budgets, which is what we're currently considering. So I wonder whether process-wise, it would be better for us to consider those two papers first, and then revisit the financials on the second, when we actually have the outcomes of the papers.
So the two you refer to are Grants for Community Facilities and the proposed South Dunedin Community Complex?
Correct, so that's a report on the community complex.
All right, well, I have consensus from staff as to the sense of doing that, so can we switch our attention? And I note that quite a lot of the questioning when we were discussing public libraries was about the proposed South Dunedin Community Complex, in any case, so maybe there are not that many more questions, but can we, perhaps, because we've started on that, can we, perhaps it would be sensible, if council is of agreement, to start with the South Dunedin Community Complex, get the questions of that out of the road, and then go back to grants? So are there any more questions on the report which starts at 18.11.1, on the proposed South Dunedin Community Complex? Councillor Thompson?
Quite apart from the financial questions, one of the significant assumptions, it seems to me, that underpins this is that Simon, in fact, used the phrase that essentially we're talking about something much wider than a library that includes as part of it a library. And I'm wondering what work staff have done around establishing the actual need for the various suggestions that will take up the bulk of the space that's not a library?
Through the chair, at this stage, we have done some preliminary consultation on what should be part of that complex, it's recognised that a library should be part of that, but the proportion, relative proportion of it is yet to be determined. The actual work on developing a facility in South Dunedin goes back at least 10 years, where OPTA did a very detailed study, which involved community consultation, around, A), was there a need for a facility there, and B), if you did establish it, what sort of things would you provide there? Now, and since that time, we've also, we've done ongoing discussion with the community, and on page 18.11.6, there's a list of some of the components that have come through and continued to remain. and continued to remain themes from the community and from that consultation as to what should be part of that facility. In addition to that, we've, we've looked at what other facilities, in the line of Counselor Wiley's question, what other facilities have been created in New Zealand, what are they offering and probably the most comparable facility that's recently been developed is Tatakari in Levin, which is a library community complex considerably larger than the one we're contemplating here. And it does have, not only all these things we're talking about here, but it has a branch of the AA, it has a constable and a range of other things like that.
Look, I accept that that's, those are the ideas that the community have indicated would be either possible or important, but what I'm really asking is to what extent have we, have we consulted with the people who the community is proposing should actually be doing these things, as to both their willingness to do them and their willingness to pay a share of the cost of doing them. Where the Atago Politech, the Social Ministry of Social Development are both mentioned, there is significant players and I don't know whether we've even spoken with them or what their desire is.
Can I, can I make the point, this strikes me as a little bit of a chicken and egg because if you look at the recommendations in this paper for, on 11, 18.11.2, it actually recommends that we go out and consult on exactly that. Now, it may be that we need more of the answers first or let fewer of the answers later, I don't know, but part of your question is asked to be asked in the recommendation file.
Fair comment. The, can I ask whether the, the DCC components, non-library components that are being suggested, such as council servicing services, whether there's been any consultation or consideration in council as to what additional costs that would add?
Through the, through the chair, we are currently looking at, put it in context, two of our libraries at Moskill and Port Chalmers already have service centres, the other two libraries at Blue Skin Bay and Waikauwadi don't. And we have done some preliminary work looking at what would be the cost of installing or allowing those libraries, the Blue Skin and Waikauwadi, to provide service centres. And essentially, the cost is relatively minor, negligible. There's no additional staff cost, there's, we can use existing computers and FPOS machines and essentially that we can do it at very minimal cost. So the implementation of a service centre in, in a facility in South Dunedin, I wouldn't expect a significant cost at all to that. The cost is in the setup of the facility and in the leased data line, which is needed for all of the operations and a service centre is, can be accommodated within that marginal additional cost. Through the chair, again, just another point Counselor Thompson raised, the Atago Politech Nick, council would be aware, we already have a collaboration at the Moskill Library between the council and the Atago Politech Nick to provide a community learning centre and we'd envisage that the, we would replicate that partnership or that collaboration in South Dunedin if the facility were to proceed.
But my recollection is they don't pay.
They don't, they don't pay a rental for that facility at Moskill and that was an agreement that was reached with a previous, goes back, I'm looking to the mayor here, but I think it probably goes back five, five years or so.
So it was in the last term because it was either no rental or no facility?
And the Politech provides its own equipment, maintains it, provides its own internet costs, all of those things, so essentially that side of it is, is their cost. They provide a community facility, but they receive the housing as part of that partnership at no cost.
Right, thank you. Counselor Benson-Patt.
So thank you. You've touched on some of this already in talking about the refurbishment of the central library, but in, in terms of the configuration of South Dunedin, what's traversed here and so on, is it a fair assumption to say that your evolutionary response to the demands of the central library has given you more than enough capacity to identify and locate the services that people are asking for? I mean, the, the dynamic of the ground floor in particular has changed hugely in recent times and I'm assuming that the lessons that have been learnt around, is it a valid assumption that the lessons that have been learnt around what people are asking for and the traffic that comes to inquiry desks is useful in choosing these and identifying these services?
Through the chair, from, from a library point of view, absolutely. The, although I haven't got in front of me the actual dates, but what's happened over a 10-year period in the city library is a, is a, is basically a reduction in the number of separate service points, pretty much down to one, with roving staff now supporting customers using self-issued kiosks. So the library at the moment is, in terms of service, loan transactions is, is around 80-plus percent of the loan transactions are done through the self-issued kiosks. When we introduced our first self-issued machines early 2000s, we were putting probably 25, 30% of our loan transactions. And, and so if, in terms of a library and component to a South Dunedin community complex, the smartest and the most efficient way to do it is with RFID, which is what we've implemented in the city library. The most efficient way to do it is to minimise the, the number of large desks and to have more modular pods and deliver customer service in that way. So yes, we have learnt lots of lessons and, but we've also just picked up on contemporary trends across New Zealand and internationally.
Counselor Calvert.
Has any thought been given or is it intended as part of the project, the possible commercial effect on providing some of these? And I notice that whether they might be used by the ministry or whoever it is, has been, it's sort of just all as one in the service priorities on 18.11.7. So there's no teasing out of whether it's our cost and our, our use or what arrangements you could have for somebody else, sort of the government might be using it or somebody. But there's other things that could be in here and are partly in here that may detract from other people providing these. I'm thinking in particular about meeting rooms. If, for instance, we build something that provides meeting rooms at our cost, does that mean somebody else in the community sense who's just holding on because they're charging the bowling club or the bridge club or whatever it is, usage now can't because we've produced a better space and people are going to want to use our space and we're probably going to give it to them not much, so it's taking away the ability for somebody else, has any comparison of those things? And I hear the scarice of an idea that you could have a cafe. Every time we think of a facility, for some reason, somebody thinks of a cafe, but that also would be a serious competition for people who are struggling to sell coffee and food in South Dunedin. So what I'm asking is either has any or could some, look, be had at the commercial competition we provide by providing some of these to what apparently people are just struggling at the moment?
Through the chair, I trust that I can allay Counselor Calvert's concerns. The, in terms of developing the facility, what we would definitely want to do, and that's why there's a, there's a benefit of having this lead time to be able to talk to the, all of the different groups, is to actually determine whether, whether we should have one or two or whatever meeting rooms were of size because we would be able to do a more detailed audit of what other meeting room facilities are available in South Dunedin and so forth. So we haven't done that detailed work, but that would be exactly what we would need to do and we would need to make an assessment of whether it's appropriate to provide that facility based on that work. And what we definitely wouldn't want to do would be to undermine the operation of a community group if it already had an adequate facility in place. So that we would definitely want to just match what was provided with what the need is. In terms of the cafe, certainly there would be absolutely no intention that council would run it in councils, like in Toito at the moment, we have a leased cafe facility, a commercial lease that provides revenue to council and there may or may not be a need for a cafe as part of it and, but it is something that has happened in other libraries elsewhere.
It's not whether it's leased just though, is it? Currently, there's a cafe four doors along, let's say, and you put one in there and unless they're the people who get the lease, if they did, you've destroyed their business, you've destroyed somebody else's, not you, sorry. We may unintentionally destroy the business and the property value three doors along from somebody else who's currently minding their own business and paying us commercial rates in good faith to run their own cafe. So putting one in isn't just whether we lease it, it also has a serious effect on somebody else further down the track.
Through the chair, and that fair point that Counselor Calvert's raised and I would envisage that that would all be part of the, the consideration and the planning of whether, of what's part of that facility. The, the overall, the perceived benefit and what research has shown extensively is that you, you put it, you put a new library facility, community complex in, in an area, what it actually does is generate increased foot traffic and it actually benefits, it has a significant local economic benefit and we would expect to see that in South Dunedin for all of the shopkeepers there and that may, may overall assist the, the local economic development of that part of the city. But in terms of the actual planning, I take your point and we would need to carefully consider what was actually part of the complex or not, based on, and that would be one of the impacts.
Counselor McTavish.
Well, I just wonder Worship, just looking at 18.11.3, one, which is the second, the first refers to the table and explains, Bernie, is it, is it the case that the $150,000 which is allocated in that particular year is, is the reason for that is to allow discussion to occur with the whole community, including retailers on that street, including partners and potential government partnerships to occur, so that we have the very information that some members around the table are seeking at this time?
Through the chair, that's absolutely correct, but, but what's not in that table there is that there's, there's no dollars in 1516, but what would be intention is that on existing staff resources, my staff, Rebecca's staff, we would be talking with, with people in South Dunedin, trying to refine the concept, do more detailed community consultation within our existing resources in 1516. In 1617, there's a hundred and, in the proposal, 150,000, that would be the point at which concepts were firmed up, any plans developed and anything that was more substantial could be potentially funded in that year, just prior to the, the proposed development time. And the reason that that has been moved from the timeline that's currently in the annual plan is that the, the funding for radio frequency was, if you like, picked up in a year out and brought forward as an invest-to-save proposal, so it actually left a gap in the, in the sequencing. So in this proposal, we just moved it a further year out with the intention of doing sort of, if you like, within existing budget consultation in 1516.
Thank you, Worship.
Counselor Noon.
It's just a question around community space in the South Dunedin proposal. The South Dunedin Hall that currently exists and I understand is run very well, local committee, has some meeting room space, so I suppose I'm just flagging that when the consultation occurs, that we're mindful that we're not duplicating existing, any form of existing council facilities that could disadvantage an existing, i.e. the South Dunedin Hall.
Through, through the chair, that's, it definitely would be the intention that we do that audit of what's available in the community already, at what cost and who's, who's using it ideally, if we can find that out, to give us a better idea of what, what do we actually need to provide in this facility, if anything? And so that's the work that we can do and would do in those 1516 and 1617.
Right. That would appear to be the questions on that, but I'm going to call a break now for lunch. I'm conscious that one or two of us have got a meeting now, in any case, over the lunch break, and it seems appropriate rather than going to, removing anything before lunch, we'll do that immediately after lunch on this subject. So I suggest that we take an hour today because of the meeting some of us have and we'll be back here at half past one.
We've done with questions. There was a recommendation on page 18.11.2. Does anyone wish to move that recommendation?
Well, I'm not sure you wish it, that recommendation actually does what we need it to in terms of putting something into the plan, does it? I've lost my pen. Thank you. But I think it probably needs to start, and this is, I only got halfway through planning it before I dived into another meeting, but some, that the first, pretty much the first line should be removed and then start that council. So that council include in the LTP budgets to allow more detailed community consultation and planning for development, that being 150,000.
But doesn't this, doesn't this just mean that the consultation happens after confirmation of the long-term plan and, no, doesn't that, is that's all it means, isn't it?
Well, I, my sense is that the recommendation simply, it doesn't change anything budgetary and that's what Richard's concern is, is that we need, if we're going to be going out with a, a consultation document which is consulting on this proposal, that that would have both capital implications and operational implications and that should be reflected in any decision that we make in relation to this budget.
Have you got something?
No.
Can I just add that the first recommendation is basically there because you had a recommendation last year that we look at a temporary shop front library or facility? So what we're suggesting here is that that doesn't seem to make sense, therefore we just continue to operate or continue to refine the options going forward. And I, and I do think you're correct and we need to look at what we put in the budget for the long-term plan because the two don't line up currently.
I, I'd like to propose something like two with a financial, the financial bit and it took 18.11.2, two.
That's a, that's a big resolution.
Yes, I know, but I think that's a, that's a, with some financial things in it, but I want to take out the necessarily heritage reuse building.
But isn't the recommendation at the top, along with something like subject to required changes to budgetary lines, then that recommendation, doesn't that cover what you were saying?
That's good. Do you want to second that?
I mean, I, I think, I think that's, the recommendation at the top basically takes two, which we've already passed some time ago, to another level, but I'm just cognisant of, of the point about the need to refer to the change of budget and if we just say it's subject to the required changes, then we don't have to work out the detail now.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do we just add a sentence, start, we ask to adjust the draft annual plan budget to reflect the changes to capital and operational funding suggestions?
So that would be two, number two on, on the recommendation on the top of the page?
Yes, good.
Okay, have you got that written down for Pam?
It's not legible, but I've got it written down.
So is the wording proposed like the recommendations with additions, is it?
Yes, I think what's proposed is the recommendation at the top of the page plus the, what Counselor Thompson's just outlined, that the budgets be adjusted to take account of whatever changes are required, because it seems to me that the recommend, you mentioned number two there, which we passed last annual plan, and really the recommendation just takes that to the next level, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. Could, could we change the word partners in the essence? It adds a level of, of something whereas what, what we might be thinking of as other people are just going to lease our premises or whatever it is, which doesn't make them partners, that, that sort of limits it, whereas we could just have any relationship with community or government agencies.
Yeah. Partners is an emotional soft spot for you, isn't it?
It is and I, just because it means something to me and it doesn't mean... It is, and I, just because it means something to me, and it doesn't mean what is proposed here, so if we could take it out, I'd prefer.
If there were an alternative that was acceptable to cancel on whatever suggestion?
Community and or government agencies, participation in community and or government agencies.
I mean, insofar as it might be, I mean, as an example, one of the supporters of, one of the supporting groups, organisations for the development of the library slash hub has been the South Dunedin Business Association. So it may not be an agency, but, so, I mean, I think we need a generic term of some kind to cover.
Organisations?
Organisation, but.
Public or private partners?
Oh, I don't want the partner. We have organisations instead. Can we have organisations?
Other interested parties.
Other interested parties. Other interested, yeah. Other interested parties. Other, other community or governmental, other community and or government parties. Not partners, partners. That broadens it a bit, actually, quite a bit.
Yeah.
Seventeen eighteen. Right. I'm sorry.
There has been an adjustment made to the date, and I'm not sure why that is the case, but the establishment of the facility isn't proposed to take place until seventeen eighteen.
Seventeen eighteen.
So it should read seventeen eighteen, the first date?
Yeah, yeah, the late year.
That was changed from seventeen seventeen to sixteen.
It's a very short year.
Okay, who's, is someone moving this? You're moving it, councillor McTavish, is there a second, please? Councillor P, right. Would you like to speak to it, councillor McTavish?
No, I need to say, I mean, I think that there is a lot of water still to go under the bridge in relation to this proposal. I think questions, the spatial plan was raised, and I think further development of this in conjunction with city development staff would be helpful and appropriate at this time. But I guess what staff are coming back to us with is, is a very high-level proposal for a high-level indication of support from the council, so that they can get on with doing exactly that more detailed work that needs to be done. I think the move to align the timing of the detailed work with the actual budget expenditure is prudent and sensible, given the potential changes to cost and that sort of thing that would inevitably happen in the year which we in our original budgets had between the investigation and the implementation. So I think that's prudent, and, yeah, I endorse it.
Other speakers. Councillor Benson.
Well, we have been discussing this for a long time, and the need has probably changed, actually, so I think this is entirely appropriate. And as I was trying to elicit in the questions earlier, the library staff have shown the capacity, demonstrated the capacity already, and what's happening in the building next door to respond to changing community needs and changing demand for services. So I think that will be also the case in respect of this facility, in whatever form it finally takes in South Dunedin, and I think we need to make progress, and that's what this will lead to.
Councillor P.
Thank you, yeah, just a couple of comments. I mean, I, this does give the project a bit of an internet, it's another step, and although there's been quite a bit of consultation with interested parties and individuals up till now, there is clearly a demand and something, but the shape of it and the location of it, yeah, to be the big decisions to make, but, yeah, I'm happy we're going forward with it.
Bernie's speakers. For my part, I support this. I note that there is not only broad support from community groups and individuals in South Dunedin, but, as I mentioned earlier, the South Dunedin Business Association has been very active in promoting this, and I think it spans the community, the interest spans the community, so I support it. Councillor Thompson.
Look, I certainly support it at this point. I've always had some difficulty with this, and I've supported it primarily on the basis of, more on the potential ability to help regenerate the South Dunedin area than my view as the perceived need for another library facility about two kilometres away from the existing one. And, but I, but I think the recommendation as it stands at the moment is to do the work that is suggested. But I guess I want to signal that I still have a real concern in that this has taken so long that it started off as one thing, and as technology is rapidly changing, that one thing, it's morphed into another thing. And I'm not making a value judgement about whether the another thing is more or less value, but we've got to be really careful that we don't just say, well, you know, we've held this out there for so long that we automatically approve it. And I certainly will have some real questions to ask around whether or not we have strong justification for the wider use. I'm going to need to see evidence that, you know, Department of Social Welfare, that these suggested uses are actually going to want to use it, because I'm not confident at all that they will be. And I just, you know, note that we are talking about a heart, I think slightly more than that, actually, increase in rates to provide this additional facility. And yet, you could argue very strongly, I think that there's been a number of things that we've spent hours and hours, literally hours debating, that add less to the bill and potentially have just as much value. So I appreciate, I commented earlier about Bernie's patience through this whole process, and the patience, actually, of some members of the community who have advocated for this for a long time. So let's do the work. I can't accept that it should just happen because it's been there for so long.
Councillor McTavish, do you have to exercise a run of reply?
Well, I need to say that I don't think anyone is advocating that it should happen just because it's been in the budgets for so long, but I think we do have a responsibility to the community to do due diligence around this proposal, and they have an opportunity through the LTP to demonstrate whether or not they do support the facility as currently proposed, and hopefully we will get a clear signal from the community about that, about whether or not what is proposed now is still considered of value to them, as it was ten years ago, and I hope that we will put enough detail in our consultation document such that we give the community a really good opportunity to understand what is being proposed and to either endorse or suggest changes or reject that proposal.
Thank you. I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Carry it. Now, we'll go back to the item above, K, Grants for Community Facilities, which starts on eighteen point six point one. Right, councillors, questions on this, Grants for Community Facilities. Councillor Lewis.
Sorry, I'm just trying to think of a question now. The rationale behind, this is probably a question for Bernie, it's probably a little unfair now that you have greater responsibility than you did possibly twelve months ago in terms of your role as the Arts and Culture team leader, or, sorry, I haven't got the term right, but there are two museums that receive funding, and I suppose I just want to understand the process, if the other community museums, which I've already mentioned, Waikato, Altrum, they must be the only other two, if they require council support of some kind. It's a wee bit like councillor Wilson's discussion the other day about the Ataga Museum Levy, where they may or may not have something in the future over the next ten years that they may want to come along to council and put on their table to discuss with regards to additional projects. So what I'm trying to find out is, the process for those other community museums that are listed here that are not receiving funding at the moment, the process for them, will it be just through the annual plan process, i.e. when these grants are considered, or because we're dealing with the LTP, is there another process, should we be working with them in a different way if that's a requirement that they may have in the future?
That makes sense, through the chair. Essentially, what this report is proposing is that in the first year of the triennium, that all the organisations that are seeking this type of grant through the operational budgets of the departments, that an approach would be made to council, and then council would be in a position to consider whether or not it wished to provide an operational grant to those organisations and to what level. And essentially, the process, as I'm envisaging it, is that they would approach, council of process would be set up in that first year of the triennium, and the council would consider those approaches, and then, once the, I suppose, the organisations that are, the council has deemed appropriate to receive those grants, then essentially those would just be monitored in years two and three of the triennium. And then come a new triennium that the, sort of all get considered again. That's the process I'd envisaged. Through the chair, if I can just answer a question councillor Owen had earlier, just querying the quantum of those grants, I've been advised that the Middle March Museum and Port Chalmers each receive five thousand dollars in the budget, and that makes up that ten thousand dollars that's currently there.
Thank you. Councillor Calvert.
I'm a little concerned that we just happen to be considering this in a year when the second biggest grant happens to be a new one for Moana or Waikato Pool, or we've suddenly got one now that we didn't have, and have, am I just on the wrong page here? Everybody's looking at me like, what's that? Eighteen point six point six?
Waikato Pool, eleven thousand dollars, which was last year.
So you're looking at one, a learn to swim.
Is that in there yet at the moment, or?
So I think the history of the learn to swim grant, has it moved from another budget line, is that right?
Through the chair, I think these figures that are in here were provided to me by the finance analysts, so I'm not familiar with the source of the ones that are not related directly to arts and culture. Possibly Grant or one of the financial analysts might be able to clarify that point.
Looking to the back row. The question is, the forty thousand dollars for the Moana Learn to Swim, is that just a reject of council budget, or is it a new line?
Yeah, so it's been in one of the other areas, or just been?
It's been a steady fourteen, isn't it?
Yes, but we haven't got a fourteen. Just that if something's been shifted into here that changes anything, I mean, it may be from somewhere else, but it's now in a set of things that we're looking at what to do with year on year. And all of a sudden, the second biggest item in here seems to be something that wasn't there before. Does that give them any sort of better position than any of the others, or, I mean, it's quite a big one to have come in, and it may well be that there's going to be bigger pressure on us, for example, funding other learn to swim programmes rather than just this one, or teasing it out in a different way, like it's come from wherever it's come from. So I'm just a wee bit concerned to have this as part of a, sort of a, here's now, and what changes we're doing next year, sort of thing, when it's come from nowhere rather than a historic, it has come from a historic thing.
I imagine it's come from the aquatic services budget, which was a large figure, which covered a number of these items that are associated with pools in front of us now, they've just been itemised out.
So you're saying, I'm a bit confused here too, because it doesn't appear in any of the previous years. So presumably what you're saying, councillor Lewis, is that it was in previous years, but it was in a bigger figure in another budget?
I would imagine that there was a review of aquatic services in all the school pools, and I imagine, without knowing the details, my thought is that it's probably ended up in this line item following the review of aquatic services that you undertook in the school pools some years ago.
Or part of the review of the swimming coaching, swimming coaching arrangements, which happened, I think, two years ago, one or two years.
Does that mean it's come out of, our budget's gone down in that area?
Yeah, it means it should, theoretically, if it has been a historic thing that we've always done, it will simply have been transferred from one budget to another, i.e. this budget.
Well, I think we need a bit of clarity around this, because it's, this is about Grants for Community Facilities, and this doesn't, on the face of it, in the first instance anyway, look quite like that, it's appeared, and I think we need, and I appreciate that present staff don't know the full answers, but I think we need to find out. So we have some clarity about what the question you're asking councillor Calvert.
Isn't this about the process for reviewing them?
Reviewing, this one's sort of an odd man out. To know more about people we.
What you're saying councillor Thompson, is that it can be part of the review?
Well, that's the point of that, isn't it?
It's just, I guess, the question from councillor Calvert that resonates with me is that, just as we're about to do a review, something completely new pops into it, and I just don't understand what it looks like. Given that it is a review, that can be part of the review, I guess.
So can I just add, try and clarify the situation? The page you've got, eighteen point six six, those grants are for the thirteen fourteen year, so it's not new, that was decided a couple of years ago. My understanding is that we tried to make this as transparent as possible, where you've got all aquatic services grants in the one area. So those things have already been agreed to in the past, so it's effectively not new, it would have been carried forward in the current year's budget and is carried forward through the future year's budgets. In fact, what this report is talking about, though, is we need to review this process overall, not, which would then include that specific grant, that grant has been going on for a number of years now.
But yes, but it's a sort of a service, not a facility.
That could be part of the review.
So if the review can just be wider, and to make sure that if there's some sense in not having turned up into this area, is there any reason, are there other things that people equally would like contestable into the, for the same sort of reasons, does this be moved into a sort of a contestable?
Look, I think what's, I think what's significant here, if you read the recommendation, it's to review the quantum of grants to community groups for the purpose of operating. It's not grants to community facilities, it's grants to community groups to operate. And to that extent, this has been popped in there because presumably it's felt that fits that category more than it fitted the one it was in before.
And I think it also needs to be clearly, Wisher, that this is not proposed to be a contestable fund as such, this is simply proposed to be a mechanism for reviewing existing levels of grants. So it's not proposed to cap this fund in any way, and therefore whatever's in there at the moment doesn't necessarily matter from that perspective.
Right. Any further questions? Councillor Wai.
Look at the swimming pools, do we receive any income in for those, like from other sources? Or is it all just repay money?
Through the chair, unfortunately, we're not the correct staff to answer that question that's being in aquatic services area. Again, I'm not sure if the financial analysts could clarify that situation. Again, I'm not sure if the financial analysts could clarify that situation.
So I guess I'll chip in and if I get it wrong, I'm sure Cat will tell me. So we just, we give them a grant, they run the pool, so they've got, they have to cover their own costs. If they charge admission fee or whatever it is, it goes to that facility. It's just effectively a donation or grant from us to them.
So there's no money coming in from an outside source for learn to swim programmes?
Well, they might have some funding arrangement, they might.
I'm showing these figures here.
In fact, this is a direct grant from us for them to do that operation.
Councillor McTavish.
I just wondered in relation to the timing of this review, really, I totally understand, in fact, I believe I endorsed the idea of having once a triennium, but I wonder for the purposes of this triennium, given that we've effectively missed the boat and that there are a couple of the groups that have been asking, I think, for a review in their level of funding, whether it would be a big imposition to do a, to do this review either this year for this year's LTP and in time for final decisions or to bring it forward a year and do it next year instead of the first year of the new triennium.
Through the chair, I think there's a few wires just getting a little bit crossed with this. When I did this report, I think what I was understanding was that council wanted clarity on a possible process for following it. And I suppose what I didn't include in here was any specifics around, you know, what happens in the intervening years right now before the start of the next triennium. I would imagine it would be at council's discretion if you wish to, you know, to, when you wish to do that initial review to calibrate the level of grants, if you like, that would be a council decision. And all that this report was intending to do was to look at a range of options and suggest a process, when you wish to implement that process was your priority.
Councillor Thompson.
In carrying out this strategic review, what's your process intended to be?
Through the chair, the operational grants that are listed on the table at the back are really just essentially a relatively small selection of the full range.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking the question.
How do you intend to carry out a strategic review? Do you intend to do it with reference to the groups and if not, how would you intend to do it?
Really, through the chair, the, in developing the report, I didn't really give any consideration to how council might wish to do that process, but it, I would imagine it would need to go right back to towards identify the full range of grants that are happening right across the spectrum, not just the, you know, the dozen or so that are in here. And then determine whether council still wishes to fund those through its operational budgets. And that does have an intersection with the other grants that Rebecca had previously reported on.
So in terms of the strategic review, it doesn't take, it isn't intended to take into consideration whether any individual grant is appropriate or needs changing? It only looks at whether or not applying grants to this particular sector is strategically appropriate?
There's two, two different things in play. First of all, there's our grants review that we had earlier in the year, which was the initial phase of a much wider strategic review of all grants and how council might deliver on its strategies, social wellbeing, art and culture, et cetera. This report was in response to a resolution from last year's annual plan that said we have a number of community facilities that are funded through operational grants and there's currently no mechanism for those organisations to have those levels of grant funding increased. This report was a response to that direct one, but the wider strategic review of grants will take place sometime in the future and the timing of that has not been worked through yet, but so it's just, oh sorry, two things happening.
We endorse a process to review the quantum of grants to community groups. So I just, what I'm trying to understand is how you would intend to go about doing that without actually asking all the groups whether the quantum of funds is appropriate?
Through the chair, I totally agree with councillor Thompson, there would need to be a clarity on what that process was and what's the full universe of all of those groups that this process is going to apply to.
Do you have a fear that at the moment, we have a situation where when people get desperate, they tend to approach us, that we will create a situation where we're effectively saying to every group that we fund, here's your chance, bid now?
No, because for me, there is only a limited number of organisations that are directly funded from operational budgets. And so there isn't that many more than what's on this list. In fact, I think this list is more comprehensive than I would have, for instance, some of those swimming initiatives, I would wonder if they are community facility or not. I thought the resolution was specifically about community facilities of which this is a comprehensive list.
Any further questions councillor?
On the basis of this discussion we've just had, and I raised the issue about the Middle March Pool, I'll just step back from that because clearly there is going to be a process that you're going to consider the quantum, clearly. So there's no point in us dealing with, i.e. the Middle March Pool at this point in time because we actually are going to run a process to review either quantum and whether it's appropriate to continue at that level or any other level. Is that correct?
Councillor McTavish.
Just in answer to that, what we need to decide on today is what process we use for that. So we have the option of a decentralised annual review process, which is often option three. And then basically staff have given us another option, which is option four, which adds in every, once every three years, a wider, more strategic approach to it, which would broaden it out potentially to other community groups that are operating community facilities on behalf of the council effectively.
That being the case, would someone like to move?
Well, I'm happy to move, you wish, option four. But I think I would also like to add a two, which is that council requests the decentralised individual annual review occur this year, so i.e. in time for final deliberations. And that would give us a bit more information upon which to make decisions about things like the Middle March Pool, which will come forward. So it would mean however that we weren't making that decision, it would effectively be a star, an operational review.
You're seconding that councillor Calvert?
I'll second it.
Seconding councillor Staines, okay. We'll just, we'll just do it in discussion. So do you want, for start, I'll put your name down councillor Calvert, do you want to speak to it first, councillor McTavish?
Or just briefly, I think there is, has been for a number of years, an issue with, I guess, the transparency around some of these operational grants. We have known that a number of them have been occurring, some of them in the past have been civic grants and we moved them to operational budgets. And the reason why I think it was councillor Staines and myself who moved this this time last year was that we were concerned that we had a better process, a more rigorous process for understanding whether or not those grants needed to be adjusted, rather than just having groups come and submit every year and us making a call based on not a whole lot of information. And that's what this report seeks to provide us with. I do think that the decentralised annual review process, it provides a level of clarity for the community groups involved, so that they understand what the process is. And then the training, the strategic review provides an opportunity for other community groups that may feel that they qualify for a grant to have that conversation with council. I appreciate that it may be that there are other community facilities not currently getting grants, which may decide that they wish to apply through that process. This isn't committing us to anything, it's simply saying we will, there is a process for us to consider those and I think it is appropriate if they are operating community facilities that we do have that conversation. So that's why I'm advocating option four and in relation to the reason why I'm saying we could do a decentralised review this time round is because we have had some groups coming to us for a couple of years now saying, can we please have a review of our current level of grant? And it's difficult for us to make any decisions on that without that operational review taking place.
Councillor Calvert.
I'm concerned, I think, I like the idea of being decided at the beginning of a triennium from council's point of view and then not coming back each year in the process of the triennium. But I'm concerned that we still seem to be confused because I think I'm hearing from two different staff members that these are a selection of the groups or they're most of the groups or possibly they're all of the groups plus one that we didn't think was part of the group. Well, no, not what I'm hearing from, I think what I was hearing from Rebecca was that the pools and everything apart from the learn to swim in this case, was something that came out of operational things and this is a slightly different one. And I'm concerned that this might be another place for community groups applying to a grant, for a grant, all being turned down in another of our places and not here, whereas it was presented to us as something that was currently facilities happening. It's now seeming to morph to maybe some other people who think their community groups doing something useful could apply to this part of the budget. So I'm confused about. So what's special about this collected group? Are they just like another community?
But I'm not sure that the motion in front of us restricts the review to that group. So what's the problem?
For clarity, and if I'm speaking out of turn, just stop me, but the groups that currently get operational grants, get them for historical reasons. So they came and submitted to council and council of the day decided that they deserved a grant. What this is trying to do is put in place a process for, on two of the years, council staff to have a conversation with those operational grants at an operational level to determine whether or not they need to be adjusted by CPI or whatever. And secondly, once we do three years, for us to have a strategic review of those to find out, to decide collectively as a governance body, whether or not they are still appropriate, whether or not the quantum is still appropriate, whether they need to be added to, whether they needed to be subtracted from, et cetera. So it's just trying to put a transparent, strategic process around it, rather than it being an ad hoc governance decision or operational decision.
So is this then another subsection of our community grants effectively? Would that be how, would arrive, just as another place where people could apply to a subsegment?
No, it's operational funding. So as was mentioned earlier, the Port Chama's and Middle March museums both used to get grants through the civic ground pool and that was decided to remove them from the ground pool and put them into operational funding from Toito. And prior to that, that's, I imagine, as councillor McTavish has just said about, historical decisions have been made around the libraries and there was a review of the school pool some time ago and I imagine that's how these figures have turned up for those.
So this review could encompass what subcategory of grants these actually were?
They're no longer grants, so they're grants from operational, so they don't sit in my budget, they sit in the aquatic budget, the library's budget and the museum's budget.
But I'm hearing other people could apply to have themselves added into it. So I'm just trying to figure out what the, is it a review of what they are?
I think that that's defined in the recommendation, where it's grants to community groups for the purpose of operating community facilities. So a community group that is not operating a community facility that we have can't come here into this process because that doesn't encompass that, I think that's the difference. That took me a little while to figure out too. This isn't just any grant, it's a grant for a group that's operating a purpose of operating community.
That we have defined as a community facility.
No, not necessarily. Some of the groups have their own facilities, some of them rent facilities, it's a range of ownership.
So it's not open ended?
Sort of, so long as the review ends up with something that I sort of see what they're coming from, I'm happy for a second and see approach if that's what's going on here. Because I mean, we wouldn't want it to, for instance, include necessarily Ataga cricket coming to say they're operating the University of for cricket games and could they be a community facility operator?
Further speakers, councillor Thompson.
I'm slightly losing the will to live, but the.
Don't die to his fill, just about when we're playing.
Finish my comment. Look, my worry about this is that, and I mean this in the nicest possible way, it's a product of tidy minds and which will run up against the reality of life. And it's very like health, where you make decisions based on population's best interest and then you have to face an individual person and they tell you, but if I don't get that, I'm going to die. And all of a sudden, the strategic considerations melt away and you focus on the individual. And at the moment, what happens is that those in most in need come belting on our door and within that there'll be the odd one that's not particularly in need but senses an opportunity. And we do have the ability to have a look at their finances and balance sheet and say, no bugger off, you're doing all right. But I'm concerned that what this is going to do is signal to everybody that this is their chance to increase their funding. So I'm really torn. To be honest, I actually think the reality of life is that a submission based increase is probably going to most easily deal with those most in need. You won't hear from others who are doing perfectly fine and then one day they'll turn up on your doorstep and they will say, we haven't had to come and see you for 10 years. And frankly, you're going to look more favourably about that because they haven't had to come and see you for 10 years. So that's why my big worry, I just sense that we're going to create something that will stimulate demand, but at the end of the day, we will still end up dealing with the individual needs because it'll be difficult to do otherwise. So.
Further speakers.
I agree with councillor Thompson.
Sorry. Right, I'm, that's all, councillor Staines.
In seconding this motion, I think we've got a body of work to do to actually come up with the criteria for review and a reasonable process that brings these matters in front of us. I personally look down the list and say, well, we're buying services effectively in some of these. That's what, we're building a service that we don't provide ourselves, that someone else can provide on our behalf. So there's a string of swimming pools that help take the load off Moana, that we currently provide some operational funding to in order to have them available for public use. With the decisions around possibly building another aquatic complex in Moskau, it may be that we no longer require additional pool space in the schools because we've got a community. And I think we need a rigorous process that looks at these, where we're effectively purchasing a service that we don't provide ourselves, that we believe the community needs, looking down on, that's predominantly what I see in there. And I think we've just got to develop the robust process, let staff go through that cycle reasonably soon, so that we can get a feel for whether these things are still relevant, whether they're appropriate to the size they are and that we understand them because most of them have happened on the fly and there hasn't been much process around them. And we may well be putting money where we don't need to or we may not be putting money where we need to and that review should show that. So I think let's go through the process that the resolution is proposing and then we can have a more informed discussion over where we might go from there.
Well, you wish, I'm really accused of having a tidy mind, so probably quite stoked about that. stoked about that. But in terms of the, even if people feel that it is too much at this point to go through the process of endorsing a triennial strategic review, I would really request that those members please think about supporting the second part of this resolution, which is a one-off decentralised annual review this year. Because it is important for, you know, we have a number of organisations which have been saying to us, we want a review and I think it's unfair of us not to provide that. So, even if you can't support a triennial strategic review, which I personally endorse, then I think it is very crucial that we do have this decentralised one-off review this year.
Councillor McTavish, for the benefit of Pam, could you provide the wording for the second part, please? We've got the first part, which is the recommendation.
Oh, sorry.
Very untidy.
Well, strategically prioritised.
Speaking out of turn and said that I support councillor Thompson's view, it's very much around, there's a human element in this and no disrespect to staff, we're asking them to look at the, you know, the strategic approach. You know, does this meet what the city's aiming for in a sort of overarching way, providing a service to meet the community's needs, whether it's, as councillor Stan has alluded to, in the swimming area where we are actually asking community trusts or community committees to provide a particular service. So, I've got no problem with the review, but I just feel at some point, as the governance arm, we should have the ability to sort of comment, influence, whatever you like to call it, what we know about that particular service or what we know about, whether it's the track record of the organisation or it's whatever, local knowledge perhaps. So, that would be my only reservation and I could probably live with councillor McTavish's request or wish that we support the three year. I can live with that, but it's just making sure that we have a chance to make comment with regards to that, that individual group, organisation, that sort of, that personal involvement or community group where we can add to the staff's overall sort of view of the world because their focus will be very much on policy.
Well, I think that the second one actually addresses your concern because if that decentralised individual review is done in time for the LTP discussions, then we, council will get an overview at the time. So, is there, just to clarify, is there anyone who wants me to put these separately? Is it all about you for me to put them together? Right, I'm going to move it, put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Thank you. Right.
You wish it. Councillor Thompson asked me to put them separately.
You asked if there was anyone who wanted to put separately and I said yes.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood your apparent reaction. Do you want me to put them again?
Oh, sorry. No, no.
You can record your vote against.
All right, put them again.
As we were. I'm putting them on the one. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? It's carried. Number two, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Thank you. Right, that's that one and we're on to the Needham Public Art Gallery. Someone mentioned earlier the patients of Job and Cam has been displaying it for some hours. So, what are we on? So, councillors, the, in the first instance, it's page fifteen point eleven, which is just the, which is the budget lines and then we'll move on to the report. So, can we just, can I just call for questions on fifteen, on fifteen point eleven? Councillor.
The, and it's, it's actually fifteen point twelve. Are we talking to the selection or is it just the?
Well, I'm just going by what's on the line here in our decision sheet. It just says fifteen point eleven. And it goes to seventeen, I suppose.
So, fifteen point twelve suggests to me that we're currently receiving forty-two thousand a year in which from presumably boxes and things around donations or, I mean, like, can you tell us a wee bit about?
Are you talking about admissions in general?
I think I am. I mean, I'm thinking that's what is in.
No, actually, the boxes are in collections management.
Oh, sorry. And when you've got the budget next year for fifty-six for that compared with eleven hour?
That's an aggressive stretch target.
Because I'm thinking that if, if we let you have, for want of a better description, if we let the art gallery have the collections, it's round about sort of the new acquisitions sort of amount that you'd like to have. It's actually a wee bit more, which is giving your target to aim for. So, instead of giving you fifty thousand for new acquisitions, we allowed you to keep the fifty-six thousand you're hoping to get in the way of collections, that would give you an incentive to encourage people to make donations or whatever. Would that be?
That would be fair to say. I mean, I think that's quite a big jump that would be given. Currently, currently, we, that current eleven thousand in the budget is comprised of about five thousand through the box and six thousand through collections work that we may do. So, fifty-six thousand next year is fifty thousand through the box or boxes and six thousand through the, you know, through the collections, conservation work, et cetera, that we might do. That's a big jump.
Sorry, can I just add for clarity's sake here? That budget though is actually based on prior year's actual results. So, while it is a big jump in terms of budget, they've actually been achieving it, not by just the collection boxes, but other donations that the art gallery has been receiving. So, it is not unrealistic.
The reason I'm asking that is because in answer to my questions about whether you ever contemplated selling anything, the summary of your different reasons why that could cause difficulty, I understood you to be saying that you would only want to be using the proceeds of selling anything if indeed you did to buy new things for the collection and that reading the museum ethics thing, which was an interesting read, suggested that you would never want to sell anything except with the staff buying or possibly even a staff recommendation. There is quite a bit of room in there, it seems to me, for the ability to sell things to fund acquisitions on the basis only that the staff would recommend which things could be sold and that they would therefore not be pivotal to the collections or anything. So, there was, there's two potential sources of funding for the art gallery. There's selling things if you knew that you were able to use that money and only use that money for replacing with better things. And if you use the money we got in at grants, if it's realistic, even if aggressive, to fund acquisitions, is that a, is that a fair sort of?
I think selling, selling to reinvest is, you know, when I cast my mind over the collection and I think about the things that maybe, just maybe, you know, are lack of relevance for the collection, there aren't that many things for a start. And of the things that I can think of, they probably don't have an enormous monetary value if any at all. So, I think that might be, that might sound, you know, that might sound feasible, but the reality is probably quite different.
We are being asked to fund also two hundred thousand dollars' worth of new in the long-term plan racks to help the ever increasing supply of works. And so, I'm looking about putting those things together to allow the art gallery to respond more to community need by having its own funding for new acquisitions, using some funding that's, they have some control over because the better the exhibition, the more people will value it and the more we see of it. And so, it allows you to have your destiny more in your own hands and deals with your response of saying that usually it would be hard to sell things because it's almost impossible to conceive of a collection of anything that only comprises valuable gems and never has anything that you would divest yourself of.
I mean, if we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about a number of different things here. Because starts to talk, I mean, and there is a report about the, about acquisitions. But in terms of the budget, yes, we do have some money for, to, you know, I guess it's phase two of an expansion of the collection storage. Collections grow in a variety of ways. You know, people give you things. We take work on long-term loan from various entities. We have, you know, multi-million dollars' worth of loan collections, which we are able to use for exhibition, for, to loan to other galleries, you know, and they, you know, and they impinge upon the space that we have. Now, sometimes those collections go, sometimes they can't, sometimes they shrink. So, I guess, I guess the, you know, if we're signalling long-term from a budgetary point of view, there is some investment, I think, that we need to make in the collection and I think in my report or my answers to you perhaps, I think I talked about, I talked about risk. You know, our current painting storage is in one area where we have two or three rooms in the collection. And actually, phase two is to put some painting storage in another area. So, I mean, we've got a lot of asset tied up in that, in that particular area. And if we can, if we can split it, then, you know, then we are spreading the risk and mitigating that a little bit.
But you're also asking for sixty thousand more per year.
Councillor, can I just point out, we want to get through the budget line and then we can go on to the report. And I think we're putting them together right here now. So, and I think that the discussion can be had in the context of someone moving. So, let's do it that way. So, are there any more questions on the actual, on the budget line? So, councillor Watt?
Cam, I've got two questions regarding this. We've got admissions in general, forty-two thousand, and then we've got visitor hosts at two, seventy-two thousand. I take it they're related in the sense of the visitor hosts deal with the public coming through and things like that?
Not especially. Admissions in general, I'm getting a bit of a mind blank. It'll be comprised of miscellaneous income around, yeah, I'd have to check about what, but that'll be, that'll be carved into specific revenue lines that are, I guess, that don't fall into, into other areas. You know, collection management, we know what that is. Retail services, that's a shop. Education, that's, that's cost recovery from, from schools, super schools. Exhibitions income, this grant income, touring income, venue is from the hire of the institution and grants, that actually refers to a central government grant that we get. So, anything that's not what I just talked about is lumped into that area.
So, what would be, when you look at visitor hosts as an expenditure, what do you?
That's, that's bodies. And so, you know, it's, you know, you don't have to be too observant to see that, that we were at two seventy-two this year, we're going to be three twenty-six point four next year. That's primarily because one position was left off the establishment budget last year. And in reality, we're much more busier than we have been. Our visitation has grown, which is really pleasing, which is good. We need, we need bodies on the floor and some of the exhibitions that we're in, you know, planning to have on the floor actually require as part of the loan to have additional security
I guess that leads into my, one of my favourite topics of charging admission to non-rate payers. And I see there's no plan in the next 10 years to do that. Is it, you have your normal stance on that?
My response is going to be the same as the director of Toito's was on Friday, that that hasn't been a topic of discussion. This year, it was around this table. Last year, and the decision was made to, to retain, you know, free access to visitors regardless of whether they're residents or not. And we haven't, we haven't picked up that conversation yet.
Okay. When I look at education and visitors programmes, I take it that's mostly related around schools and my, I guess I'm looking at, is there any way we can see, without charging the school kids to come, a way to grow the revenue in that area?
Honestly, that's, I don't think so. Like I said, we, you know, the grant income in the revenue area, fifty-three point three, that's a, that's a grant that we give from central government to teach eight thousand school kids. We make additional revenue from public programmes we charge for those. But that's, that's likely what we'll be.
And then finally, as I asked Toito on Friday, is any ideas of Giga Town and how that may?
Giga Town is hugely exciting. You know, the art gallery works with, you know, people in the knowledge area who are early adopters of this kind of technology. So, we expect to be working with artists and designers who want to use the city's Giga Town. We have opportunities to, to bring in programmes from overseas in real time, I guess depending on, you know, timelines in Europe and Asia and America. But it's hugely exciting. And, you know, we're an organisation that likes to take risks, likes to, likes to look at new opportunities. And so, you know, we're, you know, we're looking forward to, I guess, working and seeing what Giga Town actually, you know, means for us. But we'll definitely be there at the forefront.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councillor Benson, Paul?
Just a general question about acquisitions in respect of what was asked earlier. And I'm not familiar with the rigor of the process, having been previously the council's appointee on the acquisitions committee, among other. appointee on the acquisitions committee, among others. Should you be approached by another gallery who wanted to acquire a work that you held that wasn't of great strategic importance to our collection, do you have the capacity currently to take advantage of what might be a mutually beneficial position to sell something at a, at a good price to another gallery with the appropriate procedures, provided it wasn't part of an endowment and wasn't otherwise tagged, with a view to using funds in re-acquisition of something that you wanted, where there was a gap in our collection?
In theory, yes. In theory, there would be nothing, but, you know, there is a process, and I think I, you know, gave some...
No, I'm not advocating sales of assets, but given what you said earlier in response to the general nature of the collection as it exists, there is nonetheless a capacity for you to quit something that's not high priority, should the eventuality present itself that that was a sensible thing to do.
That's correct, thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
Just in terms of the proposed capital spend on the basement store, the, the temperature-controlled storage facilities built as part of Toyto, is, have we investigated the capacity to use that space for long-term storage?
I've mentioned it to Jennifer, and it's something that, that we're going to have a talk about.
Could we do that quite quickly, because I've gotten, I've gotten aversion until somebody proves to me otherwise that we should be investing in more climate-controlled storage space when we've invested millions in providing that down the road in this facility?
Basement storage is not climate-controlled. The basement, so you're referring to the expenditure in 2019, 2020?
204K basement store, new capital added.
Yeah, so on page two, 1514. That's, at the moment, on the very bottom floor of the, of the gallery, we have the workshop area, and we have a store of sorts for, for furniture, for exhibition crates, and for exhibition-related material, that's non-collection item, that's non-collection-based. We don't have enough storage space, so what we tend to do is, we tend to divest ourselves of it. And then a couple of years later, we'll rebuild, you know, we'll rebuild furniture, bases, walls, that kind of thing, because we just don't have enough storage space. We have, and it's the basement of the DIC, it's called Santa's Grotto, actually, we have a lot of room, but it's not fire-protected, it's not sprinkler, you know, so that's...
Or, or, I'll settle that, but could I ask that there be some serious considerations to whether we need to spend that $200,000, or whether we could, given that it's clearly for storage of stuff that we might use intermittently, investigate?
Well, that's something, that's what the answer to the original question is that, you know, I, I, well, I don't think, from listening to Jennifer talk at Toyto, but don't think they have that, you know, that, that space capacity.
Well, then, given we've built it to last them 20 years, I suspect that that needs investigating as to whether that's not what they'd like to have in it, as opposed to they don't have the space. I'm suggesting that that is not, I'm stating that to be the case.
Councillor Lim.
Been asked, thank you.
Okay. All right. Is that all the questions on the budget line? And we have, Cam, there's to some extent the options in the report, so let's move on to the options for growing art gallery, art acquisition funding, and this is agenda pages 161. Is this a separate...
Came with the 17 January memo to mayor and councillors.
So questions on that, councillors.
The decision we've currently made not to meantime, because presumably all our decisions are meantime, to charge admission to the art gallery, if we did what is suggested in this report, it seems to me that would preclude us from ever doing so, or, or receiving the funding from doing so, is that...
I don't follow.
Well, it says allocates cash donations made by the gallery visitors to acquisitions, so it's, if we then went and did something, took away donations, that would...
That's under the current voluntary donations, you know, scam, where at, you know, at Toyto and at the art gallery, you've got, you've got donations box, boxes. So what we're saying is that currently, those, you know, those funds are put into an income stream for the conservation of collection items, that's why they sit in conservation revenue. And if we can tell our visitors a compelling story about what's going to happen to their funds, and, and have that, you know, have that call to action be about acquisitions, that's going to help us to grow that revenue stream, to grow that, that...
So if you took it away from another line...
Well, it's all on the top, isn't it?
Well, no, 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 no. If you took it away from the other line, you'd presumably be wanting us to fund that amount worth of where it's currently going, because otherwise you'd be short.
And it does into a, it goes into a revenue, you know, there's a, there's a revenue line, and that's where it goes, and we have a separate, you know...
Councillor Kell, it's correct. But basically, we can only use the money once, and so whether it's for operational costs or acquisitions, you know, at the moment, they've got a clear budget that says acquisitions. If you're saying or suggesting that you use that donation money, that would then be variable on any basis, depending on how successful they were, so...
So it would turn the current sort of 50,000 for acquisitions into an increasing each year, lot of acquisitions together with the, call it 56,000 a year, we're hoping to get. So it's an increase of 56 plus the extra each incremental each year, and you're still then short of the amount that you would have in your conservation. So that's another 50,000, if we're currently getting about 50 or something.
So currently, we spend, I don't have the figures in front of me, 50,000, you've got 56,000 coming in. If you're going to put that 56,000 out for acquisitions, on top of your 50,000, you're going to have to replace that 56,000 for your operation.
Yes. So could we have that sort of put out on the table somewhere for the actual effect on our year-on-year budget for that? Because we wouldn't want to suddenly find that you were 50,000 short in conservation and then...
Well, I think first we need to agree what you're acquisition...
Yes.
What you're proposing from the paper, basically.
We sort of need to know the, the effect on your budgets and ours of your recommendation. That's what I'm trying to tease out.
It's 56,000 on rates every year.
Correct.
Cash, that's what the effect is. Which is about point 05Z.
Not, I don't think it's a total effect.
Councillor McTavish is correct.
So that 56 is the, currently the income that comes from...
The current income is, is 11, isn't it?
Budget. So, so, so if you've got your 56,000 budget there, and you want to use that for acquisitions, that 56,000 is currently used...
For conservation.
For operations of the gallery. So if you want to increase their acquisitions budget by 56,000, you're going to have to put an additional 56,000 into their budget, which will have to come from rates.
Plus money over the period, you know, increasing.
No, there's a separate decision.
Right, well, then there's another...
No, no, it's not another, unless we decide, we decide to put that in. So the recommendations don't include an annualized increase, percentage increase. If we wish to add that in, that's an additional option, which is given to us on page 6M4, but it's not part of the recommendations as they stand.
So does that mean although it's there, you're not recommending that we increase election?
No, the, the title of the report was how to grow the acquisitions fund through public and private means, and I have shown you what a public increase might look like.
So you're not, you're not recommending an increase each year in the acquisition?
No, I'm making, my recommendations are on page one.
Okay, councillor Lim.
Thank you, worship, with regards to the recommendations. Let's say that the council adopt the 50,000, the status quo approach. Would those recommendations create any disadvantage or impede our reputation with the art gallery fraternity and private collections? Because you made the point before, Cam, that it's because of our standing in the, in the, it's sort of the art space.
That's why you do, we are able to show a number of private collections. So would these recommendations impede that reputation in any shape or form?
50,000 is quite low, and I tried to show you what comparable, what comparable peer institutions are funded at, and it's considerably more than that. We're quite realistic about, you know, the financial situation that we operate in, and there's no way I'm coming to you and saying, you know, Christchurch Art Gallery, get this, that's what I want, because that's, you know, this is not realistic. And I'm not advocating an increase. I, I guess it's good that you note that that's, that's quite a, you know, when we benchmark ourselves, that's quite a low level, but we, we operate in the environment that we, that we have to.
Thank you. Councillor McTavish.
I was just providing clarification.
Councillor Benson-Pope.
I was just wanting to ask Mr. Chairman if you'd like someone to move the recommendations to go...
Happy to have a mover, I seem to have got plenty of questions anyway, so, yep.
Right, I'll move then.
You'll move the recommendations on page 16?
Yep.
Page 16 and 1. Is there a second? Councillor McTavish.
And in doing so, Mr. Chairman, I think, I'd just like to make two observations. The first one is that, that as is alluded to in the report, we are very fortunate in the city to have a collection that's arguably first equal in the country. And we have that collection because of the good fortune of a lot of benefactors, and the good sense of this council's predecessors in establishing a stunning building, in old buildings in the centre of the city. And many of you, many of us will remember how acrimonious and unpleasant that ridiculous decision was, or it's turned out to be a fantastic one, and certainly locates our gallery in a much more accessible place for, to needing people and visitors and anywhere else. One of the embarrassments about, probably the only one in my mind about our art gallery is how miserable we've been historically with support for acquisitions. We've been very fortunate as a city, that people like the De Beers and Helensteins and Theormans and others have endowed both other facilities and our art gallery so handsomely. Unfortunately, they're dead now, and while their estates and trusts are still involved, our involvement in the wider sense has been wanting, I believe. And I think it's long overdue time that we made a small amount of progress, and this is only a small amount of progress, in improving our contribution, the civic contribution to acquisitions. I think this is a really sensible way to do that, in the context of encouraging both visitors to see where their donations might be going, but also showing at least small bona fides in terms of encouraging other people to make donations to one of the country's leading art institutions. So I think this is a good initial step. We know how flush with cash we are, but this is a really good way of reducing an imbalance that has been frankly embarrassing. And when you consider the value of the work and the cost of contemporary work, even from emerging artists, we are talking about very modest sums indeed. I mean, the fact is that works by major New Zealand artists cost half a million, three quarters of a million dollars, if they're significant works. So it takes quite a long time with inputs like this to come to good purchasing decisions, even of emerging artists, and I think we should give the people who are doing the arts, the Art Gallery Society and the acquisitions committee, and our own staff, some better tools to keep improving the collection.
Councillor Kell.
I've just really got another question, because I don't understand quite the recommendations, whether they, those cash donations are already allocated. So to say to allocate, allocate them to acquisitions as a recommendation doesn't explain what happens.
I think, I think that's what Mr. Mackenzie was explaining before, but I understood him correctly, that if these are allocated to that, then clearly there would be a cost to the rate payer to make up the difference where it was going before.
Yes, so I'm saying that that recommend, that that resolution doesn't address where they, what's happening in the alternative, so I'm taking...
No, it doesn't, and the commentary and the consultation document can do that, it's not necessarily, necessarily. Councillor Thompson.
Could I, I'd like the recommendations to be put separately, if they could. I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm not of a mind at the moment to double the acquisitions budget, which is likely what we're doing. I would rather see, I'm fully supportive of number three in particular, and I just don't think that at the moment we can justify it, so I'd like to be voting against that. I think that the 50,000 is...
Happy to do that. Councillor Stans.
Maybe a question first, because that depends what my debate, how my debate goes. In the 1516 year, which is the one we are talking about, are you request, are you going to be requesting additional funds for conservation because the donations are going towards acquisitions?
My answer to that is no.
Okay, so, having got that piece, I am supportive of the resolutions. Personally, I think as a council, we need to give more thought to how we might assist, whether that is financially or otherwise, to help grow the acquisitions budget for the gallery.
Can I just add for clarity? What will happen is the fact that if you're saying you want the cash donations to go into acquisitions budget, you're saying your budget then is going from 50,000 to 106,000, which will create a 56,000...
I'm saying the, the other, the other budget lines do not change. So there's nothing now...
So that means that...
In the conservation budget.
So the conservation budget then, from a, cost will still stay the same, just will not have 56,000 worth of revenue, which will mean they will have to do less conservation...
Or reallocate.
Or reallocate.
If that, if that's the intent, then I support the resolutions.
Which is, which is a 56,000 increase in the acquisition budget.
And consequently decrease.
But, but a decrease in the overall operating, it's a neutral in the operating budget, because it's dropped into acquisitions and come out of operational.
In a...
That's the way it was answered.
I, I know the way it was answered, I...
Can I have two minutes of Cam?
Yeah.
If I could just correct what I said before. I had counsel from the chief financial and yes, I retract my answer to you, councillor Staines, and invest that please.
All right, that's a little unfortunate because I was going to support it on the proviso that we looked at an increase for the following year to, given that we all know what the donations were.
The collections expenditure is on staff, you know, it's $200,000, which is on staff and materials. That can't decrease by $56,000 to be reallocated to acquisitions. And that's effectively what we're talking about and that I can't, you know, the operation just won't survive, so you can't do that.
That puts me in a very difficult position, but my fundamental position is very much in line with councillor Benson Pope. $50,000, you'd have to save for 10 years to buy a work of any significance and that would be at the lower end of the scale. And I think as a council and as the representative of our community, we've got to understand that if we wish to have a collection that will continue to be considered one of the better collections in New Zealand over time and this city gets a lot of economic benefit from its art gallery, even though we don't charge and even though I think sometimes we should, the reality is that the art gallery is a significant attractor, as are our museums, to visitors of the city. If we don't invest in the collection, then over time that benefit decreases. And while I know we're in a position now where we can't race out and throw lots of dollars at it, I think we have to start to take seriously the fact that there needs to be an increase in the acquisitions budget, not necessarily just by the fact that we step up and put more in it, but in fact we get a better message to our community. There are people of significant wealth in this community who do allocate money from their personal funds to organisations. We have to put up a good case for it though. And that's what was encouraging to me in the donation side and in having, setting up a foundation, is that there's more marketing, there's more attempt to leverage the need for acquisition and even down to doing what Christchurch did, which was to say, we can buy this artwork and the city council, I think it was the city council, said, well, we'll match, we'll have a matching fund. If the community raises this much, we'll match it and we'll go and buy this artwork. I think some of those things we have to look at here. Yes, they will have a cost, yes, it will have an impact on the rate payer, but personally $50,000 doesn't buy you, wouldn't even buy you a decent grab, Sydney.
Any further speakers? Councillor McTavish.
Can you just briefly, my support for this is provisional in the sense that I understand that we are going to revisit our decisions on the second when we have an understanding of the impact on budgets. However, in relation to two, which I think is the controversial one, my sense is that when someone donates at the art gallery, they do not understand that they are donating to support core operational costs of that facility. And I don't think it's fair that those, that that fund is used for that purpose. I think it's, if that is the case, then I think we would, if that was clear that that was the case, then I think that we would probably get fewer donations in that box because people would see for what it was and probably wouldn't feel that that was right. And so that's why I'm supporting this, not because I sincerely think that, yeah, I can understand, given the fiscal situation that we're in, why that has been the case. However, I think if it is possible for us to amend that this financial year, then I would like to do so. And so I'm moving in that direction. I'm hoping that on the second we can continue this position if it's supported around the table, but it may be that we aren't able to do that on the second. So that's why I'm moving in this direction, that's why I'm supporting. I do think that we need to write this if we possibly can, as soon as we possibly can.
Councillor Noon.
Would the mover in second entertain an amendment to two where there was a timeframe set? So it allowed the establishment of the trust, the fundraising trust, and then at some point, I'm not, I'm just suggesting this, but at some point, two years, three years, where the cash allocation from donations, that decision was reviewed? It's just putting it out there, just trying to look at a way-
Well, Mr. Chairman, if that is, as I interpreted it, that this is subject to review and these steps are subject to review in two years, I've got no issue with that provided they all kick into place now, as is the case here. I mean, things like this would constantly be under review anyway. If a trust gets going and starts attracting lots of funds for acquisitions, then we might want to change our attitude, but I've got, personally got no issue with a reference to a review in two years being included.
I would point out that these, the council was on in these matters and can review it whenever it wants in any case. And if, for instance, as councillor McTavish suggests, it was, you know, clearly labelled that the donations were going to new acquisitions and we pulled in a couple, a couple of hundred K, then we might capitalise on it. You know, I mean, we're going to review, everything is subject to review.
My point was more around the success of the trust, clearly, because if the trust isn't successful, well, clearly the ongoing allocation of the cash would be a requirement, I imagine.
I think there's a little bit of wires crossed. I think what Andrew is advocating is that we put something into the motion which basically says that we aim to get to the point that donations received are being allocated to acquisitions within four years or three years or something. Is that what you were advocating?
I'm assuming it's something that says that, and that the effect of these policies be reviewed in two years.
But I don't think that that's what councillor Noon is teaching us.
Well, what I'm trying to do is to ensure that there's an incentive for the trust to very much achieve their objective and we don't know that, whether it will be successful or not, or it no doubt will be successful over time, but in the short term, it may, it may take some time before it really is established and-
Can I suggest a word then? And just at the end of, as a fore, that the success of these policies be reviewed in two years.
That's fine.
Have you with that? So four, that the success of these policies be reviewed in four years, two years. Okay. Are there further speakers? Right, councillor Benson Pope.
No, I think it's all been said really, Mr. Chairman.
Now, there's been a request to be put separately, so I'm going to put them one at a time and there are four. The first is that the council supports the art gallery to continue to foster relationships and encourage, to encourage bequests. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried? Number two, council allocates cash donations made by gallery visitors to acquisitions. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Could I have a show of hands, please?
We have a division.
Division.
Councillor Benson Pope.
Aye.
Councillor Calvert.
Aye.
Councillor Hall.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Noon.
Aye.
Councillor Pete. Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Sorry, that was aye. No, thank you. Councillor Wiley.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Carried at two.
And put number three, that the council supports the gallery to set up an independent foundation in the form of a charitable trust to act as a fundraising entity for gallery projects, including acquisitions. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried? And the final one that the, should we go into the review in two years? All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Carried. Thank you. Now, by my reckoning, that is everything in the museums, libraries and art gallery section 15. Jane, can you confirm that? Right, so I will put from the chair, move from the chair, recommendations one to four. If you get it, councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Right, we're now on to, and Jane, can you just confirm this for me? There's nothing prior to this that we've skipped over, is there? Or is there?
No, I believe the programme now, I mean, we're going to this front, we've got the reservation from Andrew and from the March Pop.
Which all-
Yes, and-
Which all withdrew because of the conversation we had earlier because of the review. So I'll formally withdraw that when you're ready.
That's fine, thank you. So we are now on to corporate departments. This is 17.1 and we start the city fleet and Mr. Mackenzie appropriately just taking responsibility for this particular section. Inappropriate. So this is pages 17.1 to, well, corporate departments starts in 17.1 and then city fleet 17.3. So any questions? Let's just go through those. Any questions starting from 17.1, please? So, worship, 17.1, our councillor Noon.
Just a question around the adjustment with the internal charges. And that's essentially playing with numbers, is it not?
I'd never like to admit that I was playing with numbers. So effectively what we've said is that the fiscal strategy for this should be break even as opposed to making a surplus in the past, which was just-
So you've adjusted the funding policy to suit?
Correct, yeah, thank you.
Specifically on city fleet? Councillor Paul.
Have you been looking into GPS on the city fleet car?
Yes, so a number of vehicles are currently GPS and we're looking at doing the whole fleet. First of all though, we actually, first of all, the process that I want to do is review the whole fleet and see what is appropriate and what's not. Because the usage of some of the vehicles is not very much, so we want to reduce the size of the fleet overall.
Yeah, well, they tell me they're Wellington, they actually cut one or two cars out of their fleet, but they GPS them all because it won't record.
More than likely.
Further questions? Moving down to corporate leadership, 7.7.
Corporate leadership I'm fine with. Communications, I think Sandy's just itching to get up here.
Right, then access the questions on corporate leadership. Sandy, if you'd like to come up and go on, council communications, 17.11. Councillor McTavish.
Just wondering what web communications equipment is?
Upgrading the council website.
Very good, thank you.
Customer service agency, 17.15.
Just on there, sorry. Could we not just say website?
Yeah, I think there was some nuance around it, there was some equipment with it as well, I think. Might have been equipment for the server or other than-
CSA. Finance, I think. HR, human resources, 17.23.
I'd like to ask something there.
Councillor Calvert.
I'd like to ask why, and I'm sure I'm just reading it funny, centralising HR has had the effect of making it more expensive?
So one of the major reasons that HR resources have gone up is because of health and safety legislation and it's having to put additional resources into it.
No, that's not what it says, sort of, but I-
I've taken it to mean that previously the budgets set, some of the HR budgets set different lines and they've been pulled together in one line, that's what I think.
So that's for recruitment costs? Yeah, yeah, correct.
Does that mean they've gone down in other areas?
Correct, yes.
Right, so there's 85. Those things that will just rearrange themselves from one budget to another mostly, haven't they?
Yes.
Property management, 17.27. Business information services, 17.31. Councillor McTavish.
Just in relation to the disaster recovery and backup, it surprises me somewhat that this is new.
What we've just completed is a review of our capability and we have improved it with, we're in the process of migrating to an off-site data storage facility, which we, and we now have comprehensive disaster recovery in a way that we probably haven't had until now. So we've always had backup and some form of disaster recovery, this is just at a slightly higher level, following from the learnings of Christchurch.
Right, okay.
It just costs a little bit more.
Yeah. Is the reason why you're moving to an off-site data storage centre because that is more cost effective overall?
It just gives us a bit of service, so it means we have our data in two separate locations, which we haven't had before. It's like one off-site and one out of the city.
I see, yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Business Information Services, Rory?
Sorry? Yeah, I may have skipped ahead, I was on seventeen thirty-one.
Oh yeah, that's fine. I didn't know whether I got to that or not, but anyway. BIS. Three one. Corporate policy team, seventeen point three seven.
Just in relation to this corporate budget, I don't know whether this is where it sits or not, but last year we put in an investor save line, which was a fifty thousand dollar... Sorry, that's this financial year, but last annual plan, we put in an investor save line, which was fifty thousand dollars. I understand that that has been used to generate significant savings in energy budgets, which is great, but I'm just hoping that that is a self-regenerating line in the sense that savings from that project historically will be reallocated to ensure that that investor save line remains to generate more savings, if you know what I mean. And just making confirmation that that is the case. I don't know where it sits in the budget, so I just thought corporate policy might be where it's at.
Sorry?
Would you like me to repeat my question?
No, 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 your question is where does the fifty thousand dollar investor save sit?
Yes.
Generally it sits in the corporate leadership part and I don't know off the top of my head, sorry, whether that fifty thousand dollars is in there. I assume it is, but we'll just get confirmation.
I can verify that. She's sitting in the CEO's budget, that investor save?
Yes. But the further... But the issue there, Simon, is is it there going forward?
No, I think it's just a one-off.
One-off, so it would have to be added back in.
Is it intended that... Or is there a possibility that the savings that it generates could be used to repopulate that fund? Or are those, have those savings already been programmed into the fifteen, sixteen budgets?
Correct. So if you look at some of the energy savings, they've already been allowed for in the individual departments' budgets.
So I understand that there is still a further twenty-five thousand, a provision of twenty-five thousand.
In the current year?
In this year's budget, which hasn't been used or which hasn't yet had savings been found associated with it. Would it be possible, should those savings, should savings be found using that twenty-five thousand, that some of those savings be reallocated to the next year's financial budget?
Yes, it could be. The problem you have with some savings though is that they tend to be over an extended period of time, so you might invest twenty-five thousand dollars, but you might get a payback over a four or five year period. So effectively you're only going to get five thousand dollars back on a per annum basis.
So it may not be realised in fifteen, sixteen.
Correct. So, you know, I think the decision has to be made as whether you put an additional fifty thousand dollars in for investor save options before the fifteen, sixteen financial year.
Would we be able to get a report back in time for the final LTP discussions on the nature of the savings that have been found, so we could make some judgement call about whether or not it's likely to be a worthwhile investment?
So most of those savings to date have been in the energy area where they're talking about generally between a six and eight year term payback. So if you're reinvesting from that, you're not even going to get that fifty thousand per annum anyway. When you're saying a report back, are you talking about for next week's meeting or...
No.
Thank goodness.
I'm just talking about for the final budget. I'm just, I mean, we could make this a random decision now to put it in or put it out, but I feel like we haven't necessarily got the degree of information that we might hope for to make an informed decision on it, I guess.
Yes.
Would you agree?
It seems to me the question really, unpinning that kind of little question is, is the expenditure of whatever's being spent, does it give a return? A reasonable return, that's all. And I guess, I don't think we need a detailed report on that, but we'd kind of like to know the answer, that's all. And I don't want to, I don't want to demand a full report or anything, but it'd be good to know that either, no, well it's not worth doing these things because you don't get whatever, or if you could say, yeah, we get fifteen percent on our money and it's well worth it on an ongoing basis, then we would feel probably justified putting it back in again. Councillor Thompson?
Well, look, I'm fully supportive of investing in investor save, but I think we need to have a proposal to invest in and I think the difference is last time, there were a number of, there were a number of proposals.
Well, not, no, not for the fourteen, fifteen year, previous to that there were, but last year we simply said, we think that there may be.
Yes.
We will allocate fifty thousand.
But unless we have some proposals, it's essentially rating for something that we don't actually have any idea what it is we're going to spend it on.
I don't, I don't want to disagree with councillor Thompson, but...
No, that's right. It never happened in the past.
But I think for the fourteen, fifteen year, what we said was we acknowledged that there is very little room in budgets for departments to investigate possible investor save options. We will allocate fifty thousand dollars as a budget line for investigative purposes without knowing what those investigations were going to be. There has been one investigation done into energy, I understand, which has shown that significant savings could be generated by changing the way that something is procured and that will play out over eight to ten years if invested in. So it was an investigative budget rather than a implementation budget.
I think that's right. It was, it was felt that if the money weren't there and that an opportunity was brought to the attention of the CEO that could provide some savings and there was no opportunity for her to utilise it, that would be an opportunity lost, that was I think, it was a modest amount.
My feeling is that if somebody demonstrably had a way of saving money and couldn't find fifty thousand dollars out of a hundred and forty million general rates, then to exercise that, then we would be extraordinarily...
Well, I think the context was that things were extremely tight and in any individual budget, there wasn't probably leeway to invest to save on a discretionary basis. Anyway, satisfied with that. Councillor Hall? Well, actually councillor Thompson, you had another, you had a question?
No.
Oh, right. Councillor Pete and then councillor Hall.
Oh, right. I'm just looking at seventeen thirty-eight, there's a line for the environment strategy, which is a blank and I'm just wondering, since we haven't seen the proposed draft or anything like a proposal for that strategy, I'm wondering why it's like that?
So this is corporate policy, so Simon or Nicola?
Here somewhere else.
Can you repeat, councillor Pete, can you repeat the question?
Clarify the question.
Yeah, the question is the environment strategy appears as a line in this, but it's a blank.
So this money, so this money in the current, in the current budget, which we're using at the moment and we anticipate, we anticipate will be, some of that will need to be carried forward to next year and that that's, that's sufficient, sufficient to undertake sort of the development of the, of the project. I mean, obviously you can do, if more money was allocated, give more, more opportunity, but we think we can make it work with what's in the budget at the moment.
That would include the consultation and process?
Yeah. That's right.
All right. Think it's a cheap deal?
Councillor Hall?
Yeah, with the fifty thousand that was allocated last year, we spent twenty-five, is that right, on the investor save?
Investor save, that's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, basically what we need to do is keep that as an ongoing fund of the fifty, so we spent twenty-five, this year we should top it back up to fifty and have it an ongoing fund, so here I'm going to go and look for money if an opportunity comes along, it's going to be sitting there. Instead of putting fifty in, we just need to top it up to that fifty and keep it at fifty each year, providing you can supply the information that we are saving on the money we're spending.
So I guess the issue they got is that we're only just over halfway through the financial year, so that we could still use that twenty-five thousand the last half of the year?
Yeah. We just top it up and keep it at a fifty, ongoing fund. If we are, each year if we prove we've saved money.
Yes.
We put another fifty thousand back into our account, so if an opportunity comes along, you haven't got to go and hunt for money to do it, it's sitting there waiting to do it.
Right. So I think, why, can you confirm what has been included for the fifteen, sixteen year for the investor save fund?
Can you hear me? Oh yeah. It's just fifty thousand rate funding for the investor save in fifteen, sixteen.
So it's, it's there and that ain't going forward?
No, it's just in fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen or fourteen, fifteen?
Fourteen, fifteen, fifty thousand, fifteen, sixteen and now the fifty thousand.
Right. Thank you. Okay. I think we'll break now for afternoon tea and... Okay councillors, we'll resume. Before we do, can I just run something past, diminishing the number of us that there are? Next Tuesday, next Monday's meeting, February the second, is scheduled for one in the afternoon and I note in the, on my calendar that there was an ELT councillors' lunch scheduled to start. The lunch wouldn't start at eleven, but the meeting would have. Now, my take on it is twofold. One, that we don't want to be here at eight o'clock in the evening by starting too late and secondly, I don't know that anyone's going to be concentrating on matters pertaining to just ELT councillors' business prior to such an important meeting. So I'm going to suggest that we start the council meeting on that day at half past ten in the morning.
Well, sorry, we've got a, a very difficult to find a time for a scheduled workshop on development contributions for all those who have got to hear the appeals at from nine to eleven.
Which, you know, like, you're easily pre-scheduled to wish.
I mean, easily rescheduled, that's the point, because we've got to have it before we have... Start at eleven.
It'll start at eleven. Okay, so that's...
Excellent suggestion.
And perhaps half our lunch break and then get into it and that way we may get through the whole...
Alternatively, Richard, do you think that we can start at eight thirty to give us seats to have?
Oh, happy to.
Yeah.
About four instead of five to drive down from Alex here.
Oh.
No, that's all right.
What did you two come to the conclusion about now?
We're working out.
Well, can I just say that staff have put out a note announcing a change to some part of the morning of Monday the second. Okay, we're now on to the reports. The first one is Climate Change Adaption Work Programme, Harborside and South City, Further Investigation, eighteen point four point one. I'm not sure who's coming up here. I note that the recommendation is that we note there's no additional funding required, so I imagine there may be a paucity of questions, it's my vow hope that that's the case. So it's been moved and seconded, is there anyone who has a burning desire to know anything about why we don't need any more funding? So I shall put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. It was moved by councillor Benson-Pope, seconded by councillor Staines. And this one is Enabling the Use of Volunteers, this is eighteen point eight point one.
I'm happy to move, you wish. Happy to move?
Moved councillor McTavish, seconded councillor Noon. Eighteen point eight one.
Councillor Thompson wants to say.
Right, any burning questions, councillor Thompson?
Not a question, it's really just a statement. I, look, I totally support this and I think well overdue and I think we could really develop this, but I just think we need to be not too precious on page eighteen point eight point five. The policy would make clear that there's no intention to use volunteers to undertake work currently undertaken by staff or contractors. I understand the intent of that, but I think as it reads, I don't think it's sensible because it may well be that we decide that we could afford to do something that we can't currently afford to do by having some voluntary effort somewhere else where we were currently paying, so it may be a shift of resources, I just don't think we should be quite that categorical.
Mr Chairman. Just one observation about a line on eighteen eight seven. I'm not sure it's helpful to refuse the periodic detention people as volunteers, given why they're there, so that might mean some mataring. But while I agree with councillor Thompson, I agree with the spirit of the report, I think this is a, I mean, there are lots of areas where volunteers do fantastic work in our community and many of us are involved in activities like that, but there is a delicate balance to be struck between using volunteers or expecting volunteers to take the place in this, in the great, the brave new world of paid workers. And that needs to be constantly kept in front of mind.
If I could just reassure you, I agree with them one hundred percent, I'm just saying I wouldn't want to write a policy that prevents us being thinking that, thinking about something.
Understood. Any for the speakers? I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Giga Town Implementation. Mr Christie, you might wish to join us. And this is on page six W one to six W fourteen and the seventeenth of... I think it might have been the 20th of January. Okay. Any questions for a start? Councillor McTavish?
I have a question, thank you for the report, I have a question, John, just about the reporting lines. It seems to me that the Grow partnership would be well placed to oversee a reporting line like this one and I just wondered why the decision to have the reporting line direct to you rather than through the Grow partnership, which would embody, will have those connections with a broad range of stakeholders that clearly have an interest like the university and the politik and various others.
That's open to council to decide, but either of those vehicles we see as being beneficial, so a direct report through Enterprise De Neden would be to the Economic Government Committee of Council, which was probably a preferred option. The other option is to fund Grow De Neden Partners and for that to be accountable to that partnership through, through their governance group. Either will achieve the same outcomes, but it's just was really giving council that accountability.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, this is a question, I guess my question was specifically around partners like the university who have been very supportive of the bid to date. So I just wondered whether they might not feel a desire to be more involved in the oversight of, or is it your proposal that they might fund other elements of the plan and have a direct report through their bodies for those particular elements?
Yes, absolutely. So there may well be other calls on the Grow De Neden Partners to fund specific projects that would also, or may also include some of the other partners. So we'd anticipate that some of the current funding through Grow De Neden might be available for that in terms of Giga Town implementation.
And just in terms of, there is a space mentioned and I understand there's been some dialogue about that, but is a space catered for in this one eighty-five thousand which you're asking for, i.e. is that cost factored in?
No, it's not. The space that's alluded to in that report was put there on the basis that currently there's no rental received for that space and we believe that there could be some room made available for Giga Town to be placed there until such time as there might have been a commercial return on that space. But that would be subject to suitable lease arrangements being put in place and also at the moment that would be co-sharing it with a tenant that is also in there.
Thank you.
Councillor Cowan?
Has any thought been given to thinking of this general proposition, the things in it, being the biggest game in town for economic development or to put it in other being the biggest game in town for economic development, or to put it another way, if it was, we provided some funds for it that are not currently budgeted for and our economic development unit said this is the most important thing we should do, we should be using our funding to do that, has any thought been given to that? Because I think it is the biggest game in town, in which case why wouldn't we be putting more of our current economic development budget into this and maybe looking whether it's a priority over some of the other things that.
Yep, so that work has been started, so there are some discussions around what we will be doing in terms of Enterprise Dunedin's current work plan, where the priorities will be. And certainly my intention to make sure that we utilise our current resources as best we can allocate them. There's some programmes we can't change straight away, but we are looking for what we can do within our current work plan to make sure that we are capitalising on the opportunities with Giga Town. That may be through the Groddin Eden budgets that are left, but it certainly will also be around the resourcing of the Enterprise Dunedin staff.
Is there proposed to be any ability for us to say we are prepared to put money into a particular part of the proposition here? I'm thinking in particular the faster extension of Ultra Path Board Band, considering that a third of Dunedin's not sort of in the short term current plan and that all the other things are dependent on people having UFB. I mean, we could wake up and just decide we are prepared to put a bit of money into that particular thing and could you tell us what your financial proposition would be if we were minded to do that sort of?
So I know there are some discussions occurring currently about how we can get that rollout occurring faster and I would expect that that would be the work that the office would undertake in consultation with the city and other stakeholders that would be involved in that. So I'm mindful of the fact that there are expectations within the community that when we've won a competition such as Giga Town, we can make that accessible as fast as possible.
And that would include talking to Aurora, say, because I gather, but what they're doing and what Chorus might be doing, since Chorus seems to have suggested that they could do it cheaper and quicker if they went overground, which is a really retrograde step to hang more on a Christmas tree, long lights around the city. So it would include discussions with Aurora, Delta, whoever.
Yes, I haven't been involved in that personally, but I understand those conversations have been taking place. I'll just say that there are conversations occurring between Aurora and Chorus currently. And council also raised its concern about whether Aurora can do its poll replacement programme faster in the city, which will assist the rollout of Ultra Transport Band.
Councillor Stones?
I was just going to make a comment related to questions over the role of Groddin Eden Partnership. As it says in the paper, Groddin Eden Partnership is committed to continuing funding for a staff resource and would certainly look at how it allocated its project budget in terms of direction for Giga Town initiatives. So clearly, as has already been stated, it's the biggest opportunity. Clearly, we will be looking to try and make sure we can get, as we invest, the testable fund is Groddin Eden, that we invest it in a way which will take into account opportunities that Giga Town gives us.
Councillor Pete?
Yeah, John, I'm just trying to get my head around the delivery of projects and who's deciding on, who's picking the winners there. Chorus seem to have total control of the first two hundred thousand. Over three years, the rest of the money, the balance, it's five hundred pounds, I guess, is being also administered. By Chorus and that. How does, how does that work in terms of the responsibility of the trust to deliver projects?
So the trust will be the administrative body for a lot of the projects, particularly where there is funding allocations from Chorus and Accotell. I guess they will, they will act as that body where people would be expected to be able to go to for information on how to capitalise on the opportunities that they might want for their particular organisations or businesses. The relationship we expect to have with the trust is through a service level agreement where we would fund for certain outcomes. And I expect that that will be similar for other organisations that also may look to fund projects, for example. You know, Community Trust is one that has been listed and they very well might fund a specific project on a dollar for dollar basis. But the trust itself would administer that and report on the outcomes from any work that they undertake.
Okay.
Further questions, councillor Thompson?
The comment was made earlier today, John, I'm not sure whether you.
I think by councillor Pete around, you know, the.
We had two days of internationally televised cricket and not taking advantage of that in terms of messages and things. And I just wonder if we're looking at in terms of, for example, the Highlanders or, you know, the stadium ground, that kind of thing, messages around Giga Town getting out there to a, certainly a national audience, is this part of what we're going to do?
Yeah, look, it certainly has to form part of how we're going to market the city. I know there was an opportunity with the cricket, I only found out about that today. And the same opportunity presents itself for the stadium with rugby games. The question is, are we prepared to fund it to the extent that it needs to get that sort of branding onto the fields? I guess we've got to weigh that up with the other budgets and other commitments we've currently got before us. It is early days and we've only just picked up the Giga Town win, but the plans that you've got from the trust, I think, have a start point. And then from that, we're going to obviously look to how we can maximise all the opportunities we've got on every piece of work we're doing, including city marketing.
Right, councillor Wiley?
Hi, John, picking up on Chattanooga and how they rolled it out when they won their version of Giga Town. How much money did they take after the first year versus the second, first and third year? Because I looked on six W four where we talk about Project Life. Have you got funding in for this next financial year?
I'm not sure, I haven't actually personally been involved in the Chattanooga model, I'm not sure what. I know their uptake was reasonably quick and there's a number of initiatives that were mirroring based on the success that they've had. But I don't know how much of private sector funding came in there, I'm not privy to those figures. What I do know is we do have a number of people that are looking to put funding into the trust based on whether the city and others are also putting money there. So we're probably going to get a four for one at the moment, sort of ratio of the spend that we're putting into this project.
Okay, similarly, like, when you look at the fund at the moment for the two hundred thousand dollar contestable fund that's in the, being promoted, is there enough activity in there already or are we getting lots of interest?
Certainly a lot of inquiry and there's going to be, have to be some pretty robust debates about how the trusts are going to fund individual projects, I suspect. That will be worked through by the trust as they establish their governance board. It's only just been rejected and I think they'll look to call for applications or work with Accotell and Chorus as to how they're going to promote those particular funds.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to move recommendations or something? Councillor Stones?
I'm happy to move. So the recommendations, one and two would be as per the paper. Three would be add funding of a hundred and eighty five thousand to the two thousand and fifteen sixteen year. And four would be agree to appoint the chairs of Economic Development Committee and Community Development Committee or their deputies onto the digital community.
Pretty much as on the wallpaper.
Yep.
Is there a second, councillor Wiley? Would you like to speak to it, councillor Stones?
Yes, I will, I think it's been mentioned by myself and others at the table that the city invested in the Giga Town initiative, in the competition, because it offered a very, very strong opportunity to grow our economy and to grow the facilities, the infrastructure that our businesses and community have in the city. To have done that, then we have to invest in the work necessary to gain that advantage. The good thing is that we have some, we have won some funding, particularly for the community-based projects through the Giga Town competition. And we have a trust that is actively now working to raise more funding. They've got a target of trying to get at least a one for four. So one for every dollar that gets invested from the Chorus fund or from the city to four through finding partners who will co-invest in these projects. Now, that includes not only people like the Community Trust, but businesses, particularly businesses associated with providing services that will sit on that fibre optic infrastructure. So I think at this stage, having talked with the chair of the trust, they are reasonably positive that they will find co-funding and reasonably significant co-funding for projects that will be in this category. They've got some good thought, or they put good thought into the main project areas which are outlined. There's still more detail obviously to go into that. So I think for this coming year, being able to add this additional funding into the budget to tag that with some measures, so at this stage, we haven't got measures there, but I think we do need to have measures because we will come to asking this question again for the next financial year. I think when we come to that, we need to know that the investment, assuming we make this investment, that we have got the return we expect in order to continue to invest or to increase our investment depending on how we feel for the following financial years. So I guess my preference would be that council include this expenditure in the draft budget. But I accept I have argued at times that we should put these things as unfunded because of the need to keep our budget tight and seek advice from our community. And I think it's up to us to decide around this table whether we believe the investment is a high priority, in which case we should look at putting it into the draft budget, assuming that on the second we have that flexibility, or to leave it for the purposes of consultation and unfund it. But in moving this, my intention is that it becomes a line item in our draft budget, provided there is the flexibility in the budget by the time we come to look at it at the council meeting.
Councillor Cowan?
I've got two questions, one for the mover. Would the mover and whoever the secondor is consider putting fifty thousand for increasing the speed of the UFB rollout into the budget and the balance to be an unfunded item in the budget?
I think for me tagging it at this stage may not be necessary. I think if I look at where the trust is wanting to go and Chorus and some of the providers who might fund, they want a faster rollout because that's where they get their money. So I think to tag it means that we are committing it where we might not have to commit it and that we may commit it anyway if we need to, to accelerate the rollout. I'd prefer it untagged, if it's a showstopper, then you tag it.
I'm just sort of aware that people in Dunedin who think that a third of people not getting UFBs.
Well, the mover and senior indicated that I'm going to change the motion, so.
The second question is, have we, is the digital community trust set up to give the Dunedin City Council two positions under trust?
My understanding is yes, they are.
So we generally usually, I mean, that's the, that's the, how they are appointed? What's the appointment procedure?
The trust allows for additional trustees to be appointed and they've indicated that they'd be willing to have two council-appointed trustees join the trust. So they're not tagged two DCC trustees.
So the current trustees are allowed to appoint further trustees, is that?
That's my understanding.
So they could actually be anyone, they've got no reason, it's not for us to appoint them. In fact, we can't appoint them, the digital trust has to appoint them, the current trustees. So what we would be doing in that, that would be recommending or requesting that the digital trust current trustees accept the appointment of these two people.
Yes, that would be my understanding.
And is the, when you say something or their deputies, do people imagine that the chair of a committee will choose, whether it's them or their deputies, or who gets to choose that, or what are we saying here?
Well, in most circumstances, if the chair can fulfil the role, the deputies can fit in for them, that's what.
And not as a trustee? That, are they asking that the people appoint ultimate trustee and is the trust able to provide for that?
From my point of view, I would be looking to appoint a deputy, one of the deputies to the trust, assuming the trust wishes to have that person. Because I've got too many commitments and I'm also involved in the Groddin Eden Partnership, which at times will be assessing whether to invest from its contestable fund into Giga Town based projects that the trust may be administering. So I think it's more appropriate from the economic development point of view for one of my deputies to be in that role, assuming that is acceptable to the trust.
Could we ask then that the resolution says who these people will be?
Well, I think that it's better to, we usually appoint by role rather than name and then it can.
We have, we have no right to appoint in this case.
There are two different questions councillor. One is, I think you quite rightly pointed out that number four should be decide whether to offer to appoint the chairs. But the second question that you've raised is whether we specify the actual people now or the roles and it's quite very common practice for us just to specify the role because that's the appropriate one.
In this case though, the Economic Development Committee has two deputy chairs. So what we're inviting the chair of that committee to do, although we're not doing that, is to decide for himself who he is going to recommend, whereas I think we should choose that. I'm happy to choose that that the chair of, but in which case.
In this instance, we need to be quite clear about process here. There's a resolution being moved and seconded and you're asking them to change the wording. The only people that can decide that.
Yes, I am.
From my point of view, I'm happy if council decides whether it is the chair or the deputy chair or which of the deputy chairs is recommended to the trust as a trustee.
But it doesn't, that's fine, but it doesn't have to be within this resolution either, it can be subsequent to it.
Yeah, we'd have to come back to council for that recommendation.
It can be at this meeting.
Yes.
So all I'm trying to do is make it clear what we're deciding on and what the wording is. Because what I don't want, particularly with the short numbers, to have a whole other discussion here, taking up the rest of the afternoon about who's going to be on it and who's not. We're talking about the principle of offering to put people in particular roles onto this board, that's what's been moved. And I think that's what, my feeling is that should be debated now and then we can work out the personnel at a later date. Do you want councillor McTavish?
I'm just, in speaking to that particular part of this, I, I wonder, yeah, I wonder whether we could resolve and that we have, that we appoint two council members or that we request. or that we request the trust, to the trust or advise the trust that we would like to take up the, the offer of having two council appointees on the trust. And that we have a subsequent discussion between now and the second about who those people might be. Because I've just had a conversation with Counselor Pete and we're both feeling quite, like we've got quite high workloads. So it might be worth a further conversation with other members of council who aren't here today about who might feel that they have the capacity to take on that role and do it for real justice. So whether or not the mover and senior would be willing to just make it slightly broader than it currently is or defer that particular resolution until the meeting on the second.
Maybe the wording in light of that would change to agree to accept the offer of the Digital Community Trust to recommend a, to recommend two council appointees. And then we would, we need probably a second part to that that says, council, our future meeting will, to, to.
The council on February the second.
Yeah, on February the second to determine the council appoint, who those council appointees would be.
Yeah, I, I'm.
For me, we want, we want, I think ideally you want people who do have the time. So if, if it's, if councillors don't have the time, then you wouldn't want to put them on. This is going to be a high-pressure trust because it's got a defined period of time to do it. So it would be perhaps councillors need to express their desire to be considered for that and with an underlying requirement that they are prepared to commit the time necessary to do that role.
And perhaps with a better understanding from the trust of the number of commitment hours which would be required every month for that role. That's my concern. If it's twenty, forty.
There's a couple of concerns here. One is the willingness or availability of people to do it. But the other is, and this it seems to me is why the recommendation was around those two particular committees, is that those are the two committees that are most closely involved with the, the work of Giga Town and the digital rollout and the digital trust. So I'm just noting that it may be as well to leave, to leave some reference to those two committees responsibilities in there to guide. It's not, you know, the person, it's not just a matter of putting someone on the trust who has the time. They, they have to have particular interests and particular, and they have to have the confidence of this council that they can do.
Could, could we amend it then, your worship, and just say something like that we request further information from the trust about the number of hours required and the skill sets that would best augment those already on the trust? Because that would give us some guide as to the most appropriate people to be appointing.
Perhaps it could be more generic than that, and that is to ask the trust to invite nominations for their, for their board and the skill set areas that they are interested in acquiring. And get guidance from then, but we're just indicating our willingness to appoint two people.
Would be our decision who we're offering at the end of the day, though, wouldn't it?
Yes, but we'd be guided by their telling us, their telling us what the responsibilities were and what skill set areas and what interest areas. Yes, it would be our decision. Councillors.
A guess for clarity, can I ask what the recommendation just please?
Sorry. So it's only number four that's in question? I've taken it?
I'm happy to speak to the rest of it, your worship.
Yeah, far away.
So this is another one of those that I'm willing to support provisionally. In an ideal world, this would go into my budget. But I'm very aware that my ideal budget is looking longer by the report. And it could well be that come the second, this is one of those that needs to be trimmed. I have asked the Chief Executive previously about the magnitude of this budget and whether or not she feels it is able to be trimmed. Her, her response to me was that she felt that it had been trimmed quite significantly or the request from the trust had already been quite significantly reduced in this budget, which is in front of us. So she can feel that there was a lot of room to move within this. However, signaling that I'm provisionally supporting it, signaling also that it may be revisited on the second.
Well, I'll speak to this. I think we won the Giga Town competition with comparatively, with a comparatively low investment compared to what some other cities or towns put into it. And it had an extraordinary effect within the city of uniting the city, uniting the businesses, particularly getting behind it. As in, in that regard, as much as the money that was offered and the expanded coverage that's offered and capacity, it's a huge opportunity to build on that unity that was developed in the town, both at the community and business level. But that opportunity requires us to maintain our investment, particularly as, you know, it did, it did seem we spent a reasonable amount of money, but compared with some other places, it was comparatively low. So I think we've got to maintain a reasonable investment. This appears to be quite high, but in the context of things, it's not. And it will have, I imagine, I firmly believe spin-off effects other than those that are expected or intended or invested in. So I also think that it should go in, albeit tentatively to the budget as a funded item, to give the community a signal that this council is following up on the Giga Town effort. For all, it wasn't all our effort. Council facilitated and helped, but it was a community-wide effort. And I think that we have a responsibility to continue to signal to the community that we're still in there and we put this money in and we want to know what they, the community feels about us doing that and continuing, continuing the effort. So I, I support this. So the, the number four, now does that suit everyone? The, the number four accepts the offer of the Digital Community Trust to recommend two trustees and seeks further information from the trust on the time commitment required of the third skills of those trustees.
I'm assuming that this is with the aim of getting the information before February the second?
This will have to be subject to a report. And I think our ability to get an report written for the agenda by Wednesday afternoon, it would have to be. I just don't think we can probably do that. So probably by the twenty-third at best case.
Does it need to be a report?
I would have thought it probably does. Generally appointments to outside organizations like this, especially if you're asking for information back from the trust. And given that we are reasonably light with members here today, my advice would be that it should be a report.
I don't think that time should be in a shift.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, so just seeking clarity, we're not causing more work. This would have need to have been done anyway.
Yeah, ideally, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Are there further speakers? Counselor Staines, do you wish to exonerate your right of reply? Okay, is everyone happy for me to put it as a block rather than singly? Is that all right? I'll put it all those to the favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Against. Character. The next one is the UNESCO City of Literature Next step. This is six X one. I think that's in the same sheet of course. What was that really from this? Right, questions, Councillors? Counselor McTague.
I'm happy to move, your worship.
You can move. Second Counselor Staines. Discussion. Counselor Pete.
That's a bit like the Giga Town effect in a way. I mean, I think as your worship has said, it was quite a very strong and positive reaction around town to the announcement that Dunedin had been awarded City of Literature status by UNESCO. I think, I mean, this is, this is the step to implement it. And we really wanted to make, to get it right. And we had a celebration in December, but I think it's time now to make a move to put some flesh on and bones on the, on the concept of what this is and what it means and could mean for the city because there are quite a lot of opportunities to be had from this. Just, just to remind you that this is, we are the first UNESCO creative city in New Zealand. And it just happens to be in the literature genre that we've been awarded it. So that does actually, when I think about, outside of the city council, who could be helping us with this and, and I think first of Creative New Zealand. And Creative New Zealand is mentioned a few times in this report. And they, they need, I think, in Wellington to be thinking about, they've never faced this before, having a city within New Zealand that they, they need to probably support in some way. So hopefully they can come to the party. So the report is essentially suggesting thanks to, thanks to Booney's and perhaps Liz's efforts to investigate how other, the other ten international cities of literature organize themselves. For myself, I know most about how Edinburgh does it. And we seem to be following that Edinburgh line with this report and I'm very happy about that. I'd like to see a trust though that is relatively small in the sense of kind of around, you know, six odd plus. Six or seven anyway, I think. I think it's important that the trust is, is not like a, you know, as big as nineteen, which was a, it was a Krakow or, yeah, Krakow, I think, had, had nineteen on it. The way I see it working would be that the, the trust is the government's, government's body. It, it is in charge of strategies and, and, and the big, big ideas that will evolve out of this, this designation. I see, just to follow the Edinburgh model, I see actually an advisory group that is already established actually through Booney and Liz that would embrace all of the various literary entities in the city. So that you, so nobody feels like they're on the outside of the project. And that this advisory group or what the Edinburgh people call a collaboration group was there to feed in the big ideas to, so that everybody's feeling, you know, feeling a part of the organization. So that's how I see it evolved, but it does need money, of course, to, I think, to, to fund staff. Or in this case, it's proposed that it be a full-time and one part-time staff member. And, and I think that's, that's probably keeping with the, with the challenge ahead of us because there's quite a lot to do. It's not only in terms of kind of how we organize ourselves around here and what, what projects we organize, but we need to keep in touch with the other cities. We're required by UNESCO to do that. And the obvious one, the closest Melbourne is where we would be looking to collaborate with more than perhaps the others. But Edinburgh itself as our sister city would be clearly also in the mix in terms of who we, who we engage with. The, the thing that's not here but needs to be organized, I think, is a, is a kind of a physical presence somewhere, an office space somewhere in the city. And that's up to perhaps this newly formed trust to, to organize. Just finally then, this is, this is a designation that is owned by, not only the literary community of Dunedin, but everybody. And I'm like, I'm, I'm really liking the way it's shaping up. And thank you for this report.
Counselor Cal.
Is this talking to the resolution being moved? I would support these pro forma, as I might say, subject to the, that we are going to have to biff a whole lot of financial things out because quite clearly we've got a whole lot more than we can manage. But I'd be happy to have this in the mix as a question. I'm seriously distracted by having to report that some US scholars really would like to encourage the staff not to do that because I find it very unhelpful. What is the current US, a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars worth? Anyone know?
Another fifty. It's about seven, seven five at the moment, so.
Add a third on. Add a third.
About fifty thousand.
So the, it's literature and the City of Literature position to me is sort of core business for a city like Dunedin. It's the sort of activity that we have historically been involved in. And it improves our pride in ourselves as, as thinking, reading people. And I support the idea of a trust board being established. As I say, whether we've got the money for it, who knows? Subject to the money being there, I would support it.
Counselor McTague.
Right of reply, your worship. It's no one else wanting to speak.
Sorry?
No one else wanting to speak, I assume, because this would be my right of reply.
I, I might just say a few words, just checking, I forgot who. I think it would be, I, I think it's important to appreciate again the significance of the designation. And I've just been looking through the list of cities. Three of them are capital cities, Dublin, Edinburgh and Reykjavik. And I, I don't know, I haven't been to some of these, one or two of these places, but I would imagine that Dunedin will be easily the smallest of the eleven. It's, it might not be smaller than Norwich, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure it'd be smaller than all the rest. So we're in pretty prestigious and exalted company. And whereas Giga Town, and I don't want to in any way underestimate the importance of that, is a, is a big splash in a relatively short time. This is a real long-term, of real long-term value as well as that. This is, this is huge. And the estimation of the rest of the world, we've probably risen in the estimation of the rest of the world as a result of, of winning this. Even though we've known we've been a literary center for quite a long time, as Counselor Cal pointed out, and a significant one, it's probably not been drawn to the attention of some other parts of the world quite so much. So this is, this is huge. And again, and even more than with the case, it was the case with Giga Town, we achieved this designation with a pittance of an investment. Most of it was down to the work of, of Bernie and Liz and, and your two people with you. But it was, it was unpaid. This didn't cost the city in money terms. It cost us a lot in effort, but not in money terms. But we do, again, we do have to continue the investment. We do have to, we can't just let it drop. In fact, we're under, under the obligations of the designation, we are obligated to maintain the effort. Having said all that, I really believe that this idea of a literature, City of Literature Trust is essential. It has to be led by the community ultimately, albeit that we have to be, council has to be supportive. So I really support the idea of a trust. I think we've got to get some money. And I think it'll be interesting to see over time how much is required to maintain, what investment is required to maintain that. It may not rise much or even, may even drop off. But I think we've got to show willing and get stuck in now and, and give it a kickoff. So I support this, particularly as other speakers have mentioned, for the community to have their. community to have their say on, on our putting it into a, into the plan as a funded item. Let's see if, if there's a reaction against it, who says this is a little bit profligate and we've spent too much, then we can pull it back. But I'd like to put the funding in to find out what the community think about it. Councillor McTavish?
Oh, did you? Just briefly to support your comments, Mr Mayor, I mean, I think without making comparisons with anything else, you're quite right to identify this as an extraordinary achievement, and I wanted to add my thanks to the people who made it happen. I think this is fabulous actually. And the realisation of that, the magnitude of this comes when you look at the other cities. And to me, it's a bit like, so perhaps another example of the, the cultural cringe that New Zealanders are well-known to demonstrate when it comes to recognising the value of what we have, and that's no less true in Dunedin than it is anywhere else. I mean, this is an incredible testament to what this city has to offer. And, and it's very appropriate we're discussing it today, given the incremental step that was made with the decision about the art gallery earlier. I mean, this is an extraordinary, well-endowed city in terms of art and cultural institutions, and this is the latest feather in Dunedin's cap, I guess, and I think it's fantastic.
Councillor McTavish?
Thank you, Bishop. Over the past three days, the things that I have supported going into the budget have either been things that I can see from a timing perspective absolutely cannot be shifted, and, and we need to invest in them because of timing matters, or they are things that I feel an obligation to our community to fund. And you use that word, and I think you're right to use that word in relation to this particular item. And I think in terms of the previous item, we have an obligation as well. These are, these are statuses, these are, these are things we, our city has been recognised, and we are, we do have an obligation to follow through with a degree of investment. And I thank the staff for pulling together this report at reasonably short notice. And note that probably you wouldn't have a US dollar budget if that wasn't the case. So thank you very much for, for the effort that you put in there at very short notice. Personally, I think that this is the beginning of a really, really exciting journey of partnership around this particular status. I think that there is so much goodwill and a flood of letters and emails and things that have come in to staff over the weeks subsequent to the announcement of Dunedin as the literature is testament to that. So I think that we can look forward to an enormous amount of goodwill, an enormous amount of partnership around this particular work programme. But I do think that as a council, we have an obligation to front-foot that. In this first year, there will be a lot of set-up costs, there will be a lot of time spent having some discussions with partners and ensuring we get that structure and that framework right. And because this is going to be such a legacy project, it is really important that we do that well. And I think that that's what this funding is for, is to ensure that we have the capacity to put in place a structure that will provide a vehicle for that legacy. And that is a critical piece of work, and the importance of it cannot be underestimated. So that's why I'm supporting this, and I think I'm looking forward to our community feedback on it. But I would be surprised if they underestimate the importance of, of, of this as a vehicle, to have that incremental step change in, in the way that we value our culture here locally as well.
Okay, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Right. The next one is the 2015-16 to 24-25 Long-Term Plan Community Engagement Plan, 18.1.1. And the...
Can I move that recommendation?
By all means. Free time then. Second, councillor Staines for, but I will give everyone the option to ask any questions should they be in there. Councillor McTavish?
I have two questions, your worship. The first is in relation to the Easter break, which I note falls right within the consultation period and effectively reduces the consultation timeframe from four weeks to three weeks. And I wondered whether or not you had considered extending the consultation period by a week to accommodate organisations that may, for whatever reason, have a meeting which falls within their Easter break, or be unable to process it within that timeframe?
We could look at that. It hasn't proved a problem in the past. Almost every time we have Easter in the consultation period, yeah, except for the time when Easter is really early.
That's fine. And in relation to the new approach to community board consultation, it seems to me that the, the focus will now be on basically funneling community input through community boards to the council. And I just wondered whether that has the potential to impact on the, the opportunities for outlying communities to voice their opinions direct to councillors.
The intention there is really, because we are going to take a slightly different approach to the consultation process, is for the community boards to take a little bit more responsibility in terms of their consultation events. The public have an option still to contribute to the consultation on their own behalf, or to approach a community board member around putting something into the community board submission. There was no attempt to purely funnel it through the community board submission, and I do apologise if it reads that way.
No, I was thinking more about the process. I mean, I guess if you are running a community meeting, for example, is it the case that you will be asking community boards to effectively interpret that meeting and the outcomes of that meeting, or will it be staff present and councillors present to hear that feedback as well?
We were intending to perhaps not have quite the huge complement of staff and councillors that we have at some of those meetings. And it would depend on what the community boards want to do. I know that some of the community boards that traditionally have had a meeting, might, I'm possibly not going to hold a meeting this time round. But I think one point that I do need to make is that the new approach means that there will be a requirement for a greater commitment from the councillors around the workshop forums, where we'll need to have all councillors and attendants at those, yeah.
And just in relation to, I mean, I guess that community board issue, if there are meetings held and councillors aren't present, and there aren't as many staff present, will it be articulated to the community members present why that is the case, so that they don't simply think it's a no-show on the basis or a lack of interest? Because I think that that is important, you know?
Okay, we'll, we'll bear that in mind when we're designing the, the consultation process. However, we envisage that the councillor who was going to be, who was attached to that community board and staff member and any other staff members appropriate to issues that might arise would be present.
Okay.
But we're just aware of the larger workload that there is this year with the new approach.
Thank you.
Councillor Wally?
Just following on that, because we, back in October, we had the Big Conversations, what was, I'm sorry, I forgot the title.
Big Decisions, Big Conversations.
Thank you. The likes of the Farmers Market, I attended that one. I don't see that on the list of draft places.
It is our intention to do that kind of thing. And I think I did describe it possibly not in the actual plan, but in the actual report, that we were intending to do those kind of pop-up events.
So being more active, like Meridian Mall or something like that, or where there's other events?
Yeah. We have done the Meridian Mall in the past, and it wasn't particularly successful. But we're always open to trying new venues. And over the recent, I guess, the three to four years that we've been doing the roadshows, there's quite clearly some areas where that approach is more successful than others.
Yeah, I just note from yesterday, when I was at the Rock and Garden Day, and people were talking to me about it on that basis, and the community board, the Sodden Hill community board had a display set up, and that was one of the things we talked about on that basis. So I'm looking more at the, the community-style events rather than something like the Accento or the...
Yeah. So I would appreciate if any of you know of events that are coming up that fall in that consultation period, if you could let us know about them. I mean, we're scanning now, looking for appropriate events, but if anyone knows of something that they think is appropriate, we're more than happy to give it a go.
Okay. Going back on the Big Decisions, Big Conversations, consultation period, what, what was the most effective places where you got the most feedback from?
Brendan, is Brendan over there? Brendan, do you remember which were the most successful venues?
Not off the top of my head, but definitely those pop-up events where we went out to the community, at places that they were already attending, they were, they were very successful in getting feedback, rather than...
The Southend Street.
Exactly. And the Southend Street Festival, and the Farmers Market. So they were a lot more successful as opposed to us sitting and waiting for people to come to, to us.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? Right, discussion. Anyone want to speak to this, councillor?
Yeah, just a note of that, I do have a nervousness around framing up, I think, four or five different public meetings themed on our committee structure, I think. I do have a real nervousness about the attendance that we'll get at those. I'm, I stand to be corrected and proved wrong, but I think historically it has been shown that those meetings that we have in the CBD are not particularly well-attended. I think that members of the community who turn up to things themed, for example, on development contributions, get frustrated that they can't talk about other things, that historically has been the case, and I'm not sure that that's going to change if we frame them up on committee structure. So whilst I'll support this motion, because I don't think it's much of a turn in them, I think that the goal will be where we go out to existing events and talk to people, and that's where I would be putting my resourcing if I was involved in developing this.
I was just going to say that the findings won last year was the other way around, that they got frustrated that we wanted to talk to them about other things, as opposed to just what they'd come along to listen to, which was development contributions.
Right, is there no further councillor Calvert you wish to speak to, or either way, beginning or end? All right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. The last report is the schedules of charges for the development contributions policy, and that is six U1 in the... Have you moved the recommendation, Mr Chair?
I'll sit down with this one, please. There are a number of additional memos that have been circulated with changes. There are a number of additional memos that have been circulated with changes.
So the recommendation is on, it's the same that we had, so it's... Are you on there, I hope? We're not on the... Councillor Benson Pope has moved. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second, providing we note those memos, because those memos basically cover them.
I got it wrong. Schedules of Charges is the public paper, and then we have another paper on the non-public, which has Schedules, which has memos attached to it.
I've got a writer on this one as well, because I, I haven't got it in front of me, but we list the, it's the Northern Water schemes, we've got Waikiki, et cetera, supplied by Mount Grand, Warrington. It should also include Seacliff, because the Northern Pipeline goes to Seacliff, so that should be part of when you've got your capital value charts, just include Seacliff. Seacliff's not part of the independent schemes at Waikiki and Merton. It's part of the Mount Grand Northern Water scheme that feeds Waikiki, Warrington and Seacliff.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councillor McTavish?
There is a memo associated with this paper.
Yeah, so perhaps if I can assist councillor through, through your worship, there was a, there are two development contributions papers, obviously, one now and one, one in non-public. There was a memo attached, circulated in relation to each of them. So the memo in relation to the paper before us now advised of the deletion of a footnote, simply, on attachment one of your original paper, and some minor revisions to the numbers in attachment two of your original paper, and I mean quite minor, in order of less than 2% were the changes, and they were resulted in reductions in all cases. So it's the intention to incorporate those changes in the development contributions policy that, that you will adopt and publicise through the process.
For consultation.
For consultation, correct, Bishop.
Councillor Tom?
Check, just for clarification, that there's, there's nothing in the figures that we're approving, or assuming we're approving, in these open reported papers that is, that derives from an assumed change in the closed session papers?
No.
No, there is not.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So the mover and seconder are happy with the motion not seeing the inclusion of the amendments circulated, yeah?
Conclusion of the revised schedules, well, that includes the amended revised.
Yes.
Tended to, changes to the consultation draft. Okay. I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Right. So that, by my reckoning, that's all of the reports in that section, and that's the last section that we were to do. So I will move for the chair, recommendations one to three on page 11 of the decision sheet, second account sustains.
Bishop, what about the block offer submission?
Sorry?
We have a corporate policy paper circulated on the 17th of January entitled Block Offer 2015 submission.
Does that have to go in this section, Jane?
Pardon?
Block offer paper, does it need... Right. So the three recommendations on page 11 of the decision sheet have been moved and seconded. There's no discussion of them. In favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. That was moved. Did you move?
Yes, that was moved, councillor Benson Pope, second to councillor Me.
Oh, for me and councillor Staines, yes, as usual. Now, I'll seek some guidance from Jane. The, are we down to the final? Oh, now, need to do the resolutions for the Section 10 Economic Development and City Promotion now that the Giga Town report has been discussed. So we go back to section nine, and there are four recommendations there. And I'll move them to the chair, second to councillor Staines. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Now, do we need to do the non-public before we do the final wash-up? So we go into non-public now. So I'll move for the chair. So I'll move from the chair.
Just before you do that, that matter I raised, it might be better to do that now, if that's... I guess other councillors will have been as concerned as I was when we saw the issue of the medical incident that former mayor Peter Chin suffered. And I think it might be appropriate if this first meeting of our council, if we considered just a simple resolution, which obviously he's in good spirits and doing well, if we considered a resolution wishing him a full and speedy recovery. And also, I'm entangled in that motion, Mr Chair, which would be urgent and should be added to the agenda.
So you would say now. Second councillor move, is there any discussion on that?
Councillor Thompson, do you know I had a separate matter that I wanted just to clarify?
That's fine, I'll come to that, yeah. councillor Wylie.
I can report, I just actually saw him out on the footpath at afternoon tea, and he looked very good walking around Sunday.
Okay, if there's nothing to discuss, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried.
Councillor Thompson. My increasingly feeble brain is having trouble recalling what the final decision was in terms of the consideration with regard to the physio book. Were we in fact leaving that till Tuesday, or were, I can't recall now what we decided, I'm sorry?
You were going to send an email requesting a report by the second.
I was, was I? I knew that. I was just testing whether you did.
Right, it's up on the board, councillors, and it's just, has the additional...
Outclaws.
Outclaws. So the consideration next Monday. So I will move from the chair that all previous resolutions, including amendments to resolutions, be confirmed for the purpose of public consultation, subject to consideration of the updated financial position at the meeting of February the second. Second councillor Staines, is there any discussion? councillor McTavish.
Well, I just wonder, Your Worship, whether it would be better to say subject to final consideration in light of the updated financial position? Because it may be that we wish to amend a position that we have taken. So for example, we voted to include, just I'm picking on the last one that we did, UNESCO City of Literature, £100,000 for that. It may be that that resolution we wish to change our position on in light of...
Yeah, but I take it that that's implicit in this?
Well, I hope so, but as long as it is, then that's fine.
That's the intention.
Subject, yeah.
Look... I think that this, that's the intention, and it is implicit in here, it's subject to consideration, so if...
It's fine, as long as it does leave us that room. We'll leave it, we won't take this on the mission.
Okay, so does that mean that the meeting on Monday, the second, needs to be a continuation of this meeting, so there needs to be a new agenda agreed at the beginning of it by council? Okay?
We can agree now that there have to be some reports coming, that might be easier.
So what's the resolution then?
I just think that you note that you will be receiving reports of, what are we, on super non annual plan measures?
Will we note that final confirmation will be, of the decisions of this meeting, resolutions of this meeting, will be made at the meeting of February the second, following receipt of additional reports?
Yes.
Leave it general rather than related to LTP or annual plan, leave it general.
Well, it is Matt Lassie at LTP though, isn't it?
There are a couple of non-LTP measures for the meeting on the second as well.
Yes, I realise that, but this resolution is about the LTP. So council notes that final confirmation of the resolutions of this meeting will be made on February the second, following receipt of further reports, including an updated financial position.
And then, if you need to, you could have, you have the conclusion of this meeting and then the beginning of a new one.
Yeah, procedurally, I had moved something and councillor Staines had seconded it, so I withdraw that result, that motion. We withdraw that motion. And I'll move this one. Now, the council notes that final confirmation of resolutions from, will be made, does it need to be including amendments to resolutions?
No.
No, it's fine. Will be made at the meeting of 17th of February, following receipt of updated financial position, including additional reports, that's fine. Is everyone happy with that? Okay, I'll put it all those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. And that brings the meeting to a close.
Your Worship, I just wanted to confirm that with Sandy, that the advertising of the meeting's start time, which has changed from what we've advertised up till now, which is 1pm, will be addressed and get future advertisements.
All right, can I further suggest that that's the end of a four-day meeting, everyone remaining may wish to adjourn to the Brian Armagh Room for a small tipple, should they wish.